Is it the Parliament?
Parliament has got rules of how we conduct business.
Iparamente, inemitehto nenjela zoguzpata.
Such rules can be applied here should there be a need.
Lo mitetoke ingasejenziswa kaku koi sitingo.
Before I go further as to how we are going to run the programme, I want us to start officially.
Ngapamkoba nti kubeka, siyambe nenkubo yetu, bentekeela, sikali ngoksesikweni.
And to start officially, we will sing the national anthem.
Uku kala ngoksesikweni siza ukula, inkosi sigelela.
Umohobe wesiwe. Za zidoli kele, nengashube. Eh, asi tula umohobe wesiwe za ukrelin do bana si paka mengeniawu. Amadoda si sushe imi ngoazi, enchoko?
When we sing the national anthem, I request that men remove hats and we stand up.
Thank you very much, we may be seated.
Siya bulela kaku los ngalala pansi.
Firstly, I would like to once more thank you for taking your time to be out here this morning.
Koka lanti bulela ngoba nitabateke shalenu, lokba lapa, genzasa nje.
A process of public participation is a very important process.
Inkubo yokuba wonke umtabe ngalene ya lapa ibalulekile.
Because the constitution of the republic implores us as lawmakers to hear the views of citizens.
Ngokuba umteto welilizwe, uyasikunyazisa, uku ba sisebenzi sani.
Umka klosiseko welizwe, uyasi nyanzela tinaba kulungu bom tetu. Ogo bana sive izimvo zabantu bom zanzafrika. Kasi za ukulunga imiteto, yolo ndosilapa. The second issue is that eh, as citizens of the country, you've got a constitutional risk, constitutional right to be heard.
Eh, umka klosiseko welilizwe, uyasi kunyazisa, uku ba sonke siviwe.
That is why we do public participation.
Yolo ndo sisenza ngalene, noksa benzi sana, siso onkesingabalan.
So what we're doing here is a process of consultation in line with the constitution, which is what is the foundation of our democracy.
Ngako oko eskuwenzayo apo eh, kunamene, nomteto, welilizwe, ngako yolo ndosilapa.
At the end of the process, we will tell you what will happen to your views.
Ekukubele niwalen kubo eh, siza kunitelela, uku ba guza kuwenzekantoni, genbono, okanyengezimvo zenu.
We also appreciate the coverage that this process is recovering from the different media and as we speak, we are and you will be live on Kubela FM.
Ngako oko sia i bulela eh, ngalene etajatwe ngamakonka ashugileyo, ikakulu i eh, i radio, okanyi iskulososasa zo, in Kubela FM.
Ay ngomakonka ngama ziko osasa. I will get now into a space of introducing the committee before you. My name is Lisa Mangu, I'm the chairperson of the portfolio committee on transport.
Eh, ngoku nti zakongena kumba woku sazisa eh, mna, ndingum, jengbesicho, umshonichwa eh.
It's fine, onga ituli gama gama, abantu bazawaf. The colleagues will stand and acknowledge you as I introduce them. I'll start on my extreme left, that is honourable Sitole, member of this committee.
Tizakala ngab.
Eh, don't worry, eh, we'll deal with this one. Next to him eh, who is a local guy, so he will be greeting you in his house, is honourable May.
Good morning, I was a policeman in New Brighton in the seventies.
Next to him is honourable Kumalo, member of the committee.
Sanbonani.
Next to me and is honourable Hun Senga, member of the committee. On my immediate right is honourable Nolu Chungu. Next to her is honourable Seicholo. But certainly not least is honourable Ramadwa.
Macheloni.
Abuzi.
Molweni.
Alright, this is the committee before you. On the extreme left eh, your right against the wall there.
Eh, ikomi tile epamkwenu, kotoa kuisanza sasekoso payaa.
It's a team from parliament who are recording everything that will be happening today.
Li kela elisuke paramente, elisabeli kopa, okanyi rekota yonkinto yenze kayo apa namshancha.
So if you see members here maybe not taking notes as you are speaking, don't think that your voice or your views are not being recorded.
Ungatringi ke uku ba ka ubona eh, abapamkwenu, benga palin do, okanyi bengezino, tuktingba imbono zenu aziviwa.
Paya kubo kukua konama pepa, anoksageenziswa, uku ba ubale izimvo zako, uku ba ngaba au mna eh, au kwazu tetapamkwa bandu, okanyi klasaliape.
With them, there are papers where you can record your views if you are uncomfortable speaking in public or at that moment.
So eh, what will hap? What will happen is that I will eh, in a high level, tell you what the bill is all about.
Eh, oku za kuwenzekan, nti zakuni kellela, ngokusemka ngatweni, uku ba uyilo lunga antoni.
Ay ngokusemka ngatweni, disa obeta, kozelekas, disa uti graba graba graba, and isu tetayonkinto yola pa glom kakose. So after I've done that, we will invite you to talk to us.
Enva obasikwe bileye siza ukrela ninanize ni zo tetanati.
We are not here to answer questions or to enter into debates about one or the other thing.
Aso zo pinto lamibuzo, okanyi sibene ngutonga lento, kotoa gesizo mamelanjeni.
And we humbly request that we limit ourselves to what we are here about, the rail safety eh, bill.
Bende zo kela yoku tiyonkinto sa iteta ibe malungala, ne nomteto lo uyilo ayu, woku selego ololiwe.
We do know that there are many challenges that as communities we are facing, that could be a burning thing you want to speak about, but we humbly request that we confine ourselves to what the business of the day is.
Siya zukuti kunemi kerele mengeni, emi ninzisilulundu eschonge, ne na yechisai. Kotake beso kela yoku ti masete ngalendo sidibene ngayi namshancha.
And lastly, we request that when you do have an opportunity to speak, you limit yourself to three minutes, please.
Beso kela kaufumele yutuba lobao uteti, uteti nje mizuzu mitatu kupera.
That is to allow as many other people to participate as possible.
Ukuzi, uku ba kwaza bandabani zibatati ndakheba na.
So at this point, I'm going to sit down, not out of respect, but so that I can be able to take you through this bill at a high level.
Ngoku genzo lala pansi, and ni delele kandje, ndifunlala pansi, ni kwa zu kuamba nani, ni nikaze lenka ngalomteto uyilo ayu siso tetanga.
When we do get to that space of you talking to us, we are going to eh, call on ten people per time.
Kasasukwe kolo yutuba gesizo mamelizimvo zin, za ukala bandabani shumi ngituba, uku ti bazabazo uteti.
What we request is that you introduce yourself. If you are representing an organisation, tell us that organisation. Also tell us if you do support the bill or you do not.
Eh, kasasukwe kala uzoma apa, yoku ti uzozthaza, yoku ti mbani, ubeso thaza, yoku tusukona inda, oye representayo, ukaza yoku ti ngaba uyabthaza na utetoo uyilo ayu, okanyi au thaza.
And lastly, there are interpreters here. You are more than welcome to express yourself in the language of your choice.
Apa kagasine tolika uza uku legi ilusebense nali, kukunulu ime, oku legi yoku tusebense ngai.
So at this moment, I will then start running through the bill at a high level.
Usukela gen ngoku nti za utetan, ni nikaze lenka, ngalomteto uyilo ayu, gesina elitepeza, bapezu.
As I said already, this is a rail safety regulator bill or rail safety bill.
Nja benchi lugu ti ge, gi, um, um, ngom, imteto oyilo ayu, woku selego, yelo siso tetanga.
This bill is seeking to improve from an existing piece of legislation called the Rail Safety Regulator Act.
Lomteto uyilo ayu, ge, ulogu zoguti, apoku ne lobu sa ukona, banga pambi, oye railway safety regulatory bill.
There is a need that was identified of certain gaps that this bill seeks to close and improve certain things.
Be ukona gesindo beshekele, besfanele, zivalo, so lomteto uyilo ayu uza ovale, eh, lomakebag avulekile.
It also seeks to provide guidance on the governance of the rail safety regulator.
Inika genes koke loku safety regulator.
The rail safety regulator is a government entity that is in existence as we speak.
Eh, le railway, railway regulator.
Railway Safety Regulator.
Le railway, railway safety, is.
Okay, we will put it as RSR.
I R S R.
Yeah.
Yoyo eh, eses kokele, esu, esu zolaula.
Eh, subane kala wa na kuba nti zidoli kele, relax, relax. Kokumoya, breathe in and out. Eh, this bill also seeks to remove or manage any conflicts that might be existing through different pieces of legislation.
Lomteto ya ubano sosa, ezozindosanga kangeswa, kulebi eh, lomteto be ukona ngapambili.
So I will be taking you through clause by clause.
Disa wamba nani, ngokuwe kaje, kanyi nganyi.
These clauses, I'm not gonna go through all of them, I will pick certain ones.
Andu zuenzau ongela makaje, nza uketa atile.
That doesn't limit your input to the ones that I will talk to.
Kotake ayi ngandu yoku ti ma ufake izimvesanga, kanani ngabandi keti ama kaya atile.
It's just a few things just to assist us and guide us.
Zizindonje ezimbala, zosine tisan ezos kokele.
So from clauses one up to clause three.
Usukela uka yelo kala, yofia kulestato.
Are the general things in any legislation dealing with definitions?
Zizindonje ez, ez bakona, ez bakona kumteto, ez fana nengazelo.
Eh, how you are gonna apply this legislation?
Yoku ti lomteto uza usebense njali.
And what are the objects or objectives of this legislation?
Yoku ti zi ipi injongo za lomteto.
Clause four.
Ikaje lesini.
Gives provision for the minister of transport.
Inika ge Amanda umpati swezo tutu.
That he or she may approve certain exemptions in the application of this act.
Usanoba abengue yoyovuma yu, kuyzindo eh, afi le yoku ti mazongezo, kawa lomteto.
Emasikuchwe.
Emasikuchwe lomteto.
Clause five.
Ikaje leslan.
Deals with the continuation uninterrupted from the old legislation to the new legislation if and when it is passed.
Eh, olande la, kobe ga from leyo kala, umteto kala, kobe ga uzofika, gulowo, psikuongo.
Clause seven deals with the functions and powers of the RSR.
Ikaje seven, ni tetagen, ngemese benzie RSR.
Emi sibenzi na Amanda enayo, eh, RSR. Functions and powers. Clause eight.
Ikaje lesfoso.
Gives power to the RSR to enter into international agreements should there be a need.
Li ikaje lelelo, li nikaza Amanda eh, RSR, yoku ti ngeneguizomeluani, ndabeza ngapandla, baka fanele, basikonisitingo.
Clause nine and clause ten.
Ikaje leshtoba, ne leshumi.
Provides that the RSR is governed by a board.
Inikaza ge Amanda, yoku ti RSR, fanele ipato yipudi.
And clause ten gives a number of how this board should be constituted.
Ikaje ge ele shumi, lele thaza yoku ti bekfanele balakeke kanjali, eh, 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 RSR, le pudi.
Clause eleven and clause twelve.
Ikaje le shumele, loka, le shumenani, ne le shumenas, le smini.
It deals with the process of nomination and appointment of board members.
Li jonga ge uku ketwa, kwa balungu e pudi.
And also clause twelve deals with the issue of the appointment of a chairperson and deputy chairperson of the board.
Ikaje le thwa fuli jonga, uku nyolwa, kwa slalo, naseke la slalo, we pudi.
Clause thirteen deals with the term of office of this board.
Ikaje thirteen, li, li, li jonge, oksa benzeni kwalipudi.
Clause fourteen deals with the functions of the board.
Ikaje fourteen, li jonga oksa benzeni we pudi.
Clause sixteen deals with the resignation or removal or termination of a term of a board member.
Ikaje elolande layo, li jonga, uku, uku suswa, okanyi no pelisa we kesa, le lungu le pudi.
Clause seventeen deals with the meetings or management of meetings of the board.
Ikaje seventeen, lona, li jonga, uku lawla, no kukuywa kwenlela, zentla nganiso ze pudi.
Clause eighteen deals with the powers of the board to establish committees to assist in the running of the RSR.
Ikaje nineteen, lona lisabenza, ekulauleni, nasekusabenzeni kwe, kwe pudi nduwe RSR.
Clause nineteen deals with the issues of conflict of interest, should there be any, that relate to members of the board.
Ikaje nineteen, li jonga, baka, baka ukona opaza, msayu nganyi unga vissi sani, pa kwe, kwa malungu e pudi.
Uku ba ngabi lungu le pudi, linee, ngakheba, ekuhambi ni kwemsebenzwe RSR, lendo sidhi conflict of interest, yoyo elaga yae dilanga. Clause twenty-one gives powers to the minister of transport to dissolve a board under certain circumstances.
Ikaje twenty-one, li nikaza umpati swe, Amanda, yoku ti lingapelisa uksabenza we lungu le pudi.
Clause twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four.
Ikaje twenty-two, twenty-three, no twenty-four.
Deal with the appointment and the process of appointment of the CEO and staff members of the Railway Safety Regulator or RSR.
Li jonge, ge uku kasha kwe CEO, nabasebenzibakona, abe SRSCR.
I will now jump to eh, clause twenty-seven.
Disa utzibake ndiyaku, kaja twenty-seven.
This one deals with the powers that the RSR has to raise money other than the money they would receive from parliament.
Eh, likelijonge ngama, ngama, ngamandla ana yarSR, yoku wenza inwa mali, enamandla wanigwe eh, parliament.
Inwa mali, uku komezele limali, abanga baba ifumele eh, parliament. From clause twenty-nine eh, it just deals that the RSR reports to the minister of transport.
Ikaje twenty-nine, i jonga ge umpati swezo tutu.
One of the critical points that are in this bill before us is what we call rail safety permits.
Eh, nantoke baleglas, tongana na yolu mto toyilo ayu, itetange permit zo kuselego, zo, zo loliwé.
Clause thirty makes provision for the processing of application for safety permits.
Ikaje ge elolande layo, li jonga, ngoku nikaza noksageenziswa we permit, ezozinaga zo kuselego kolo liwe.
It also deals with the process that the RSR should follow in either approving or rejecting such application.
Ikwa jonga gene, RSR, lisabenza ngalo, yoku ti, iyau, yuvuma kwalo, nohlobe lo sibenza ngalo, kwa wenzua lomsebenz.
Clauses thirty-one and thirty-two also amplify more around the issue of rail safety permits.
Ukaja thirty, no thirty-one, lona li jonga ge, uku yu safety permits.
Clause thirty-three determines the process or conditions under which a permit can be surrendered.
Ikaza ge u thirty-one, thirty.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yoku ti permit singa, suswa kanjani, uba fanele kesu, peliswe.
How also a permit can be suspended.
Uku ba ge ingazi pangiswe, ipermitile, informele.
Or can be withdrawn.
Okanyi gesuwa ngopelile.
Clause thirty-four deals with a issue of grading operators on certain grades or standards.
Ikaje thirty-four ge, nikane la, ababa kuba yu, nklela, is, amazinga, lao abasebenza ku.
Clause thirty-five deals with the issue of accreditation of training institutions.
Ikaje thirty-five, lele ge li nikaza, i, 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 iziku, okanyi zinikaza, i, i, i qualification, ngwabo ba, ba, ngaba, baba ndofana usabenz.
Clause thirty-six gives the minister of transport certain powers that he may or she may introduce safety standards above what is already provided for.
Ikaje thirty-six, lona li nikaza umpati swezo tutu, Amanda yoku ti, ibe nganga, nguiye, oketa yu, okanyi obona yoku ti, noksageenzo njani.
I jump to clause forty-one.
Tsibandi ya ku forty-one.
Which deals with safety inspections and safety inspectors.
Oluto ngage, uku lholwa, kunyenabashol.
It's a new introduction which gives the tools to enforce compliance of safety standards.
Nteke, enta, enikeza, izitoba zoguti, kubenokuselego, oluto bali, sekenswa kanjani, ukuzwa njani, ukunseki, sebeno kuselego.
Clause forty-two up to clause forty-six.
Ikaje forty-two to forty-six.
Deals with the powers and duties of these railway safety inspectors.
Isabenza ngamandla, kunyen, na, namandla, ala, ala baba, tu baba, nikiwe, banga bashol, yoku ti basebenz njani.
Also clause forty-seven still deals with those powers and duties.
No forty-seven, usa tetage ngala, umandla, nemisabenzile, uba fandoba yawenza.
Clause forty-eight, which I believe is one of the important clauses.
Ikaje forty-eight, ndiakolu yoku ti, yonake baleglayo.
Anye, yes, baleglayo.
Ye ye, yes, baleglayo.
Deals with the duties of an operator, what they should do in the event there is an occurrence.
Eh, i jonga ge uku ba kobe, abo yoku ti, kanga bakiwa ukona iseshlo esu kobe, bekfana benzanjani.
It also gives for access to investigators who will or may be appointed to investigate an occurrence.
Inikaza kimvume, abo bazawebepanda, ubanga baka ukona iseshlo tesenzeka.
I say it's very important because where we are coming from, this is the sixth province.
Nditikibalegi lengo ba, apo sugakona, eh, lipondo le standard.
Most people have been complaining about damage to property, livestock, and even losing of lives.
Abantobani zibakala, zango puluka na kwe mi, kwe, kwe bomi, no kumoshaka la kwe zinto, kunyen no kuu limala kwe, kwe, kwe mfyoza.
Where the operators, for example, transnet, would not take responsibility.
Apo gen xabu, ndenjenye transport, ingaitati, ingakheba.
Transnet.
Transnet.
Jenkomzeka. So that's why I said it, I think it's one of the most important clauses.
Yolo ndo nditi, ye ye, nkoluku ti ye ye, ye, ama kaja abaleglayo.
Clause fifty provides for the minister to determine which accident or occurrence should be a major one for investigation.
Eh, umpati swa, ikaje elotaza, yoku umpati swa, yoyozo kwa zoguti, ngaba eseseshlo seteleyo, ses, ye ipinde fanele wenzua ngasu.
Clause fifty-two up to fifty-three also deals with that aspect of investigation.
Ikaje fifty-two no fifty-three, ye, na yoke itonge, kupanding.
Like any legislation, there might be people who are not happy by one thing or the other.
Ndau penjo umteto, kuseno thaza, uku ba ukona bandabanga inwame langa, ngayi no pulusho.
So clauses fifty-four to fifty-six.
Ikaje fifty-four to fifty-six.
Deals with an appeal mechanism.
I jonga ge genen, lela yoku ben.
Clause fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
Ikaje fifty-seven or fifty-eight.
Deals with penalties.
Li jonga nezoshwa.
Again, like any legislation, if there is no penalties or enforcement, people might not take that law seriously.
Jenka opiken na umteto, kuya fanele baka fake isoshwa, okanyi, na ipinindweza wenzu, baka uku tate uyi ngalelo yomteto, uku za bandabaitatele ngalelo lomteto.
Clause sixty, clause sixty-one, sixty-two.
Ikaje sixty, sixty-one or sixty-two.
Provides for the. Provides for the minister to be empowered to produce regulations that support the act.
Ika ya elo lenza ba umpatiso akwaz ba abena wo amandla wognigaza imika.
Eh barabara clause seventy.
Ika ya seventy.
Which is the second last one.
Eh okebela kwe sibi ni kwe okebela.
Actually deals with a process where you move from the existing legislation into a new one so that there is no disruption.
Ijonga kusua kumteto lo ubukona uyakulowo usi ngenagowo u nga bi kwa indweza opazamisa.
Clause seventy-one which is the last one.
Ika ya seventy-one yoke bela.
Just gives a name if this piece of legislation is passed, what it will be called.
Kinigaza njaye kama ukubage utelo mtetoyilwai uyawa pasusu uba fane libizon ge ipina.
It will be called the Railway Safety Act.
Iza ubizon njango mteto wesokusele go o lo liwe.
So, I will end there with my summary.
Diza opela opo kengokusho nga tela gua.
And my intimidation of interpreters.
Na uho isha.
So at this point in time, it is your opportunity to talk to us.
Ukeligre shoguti ni tetenati.
As I already indicated, I will take hands and I would like to take ten at a time.
Njawa benchilo ngapambi ligu tinsautatisa ndla nza utatasbelishu minge kresh.
I kindly request unless you really cannot move from your chair or your where you are seated.
Benza opela ngapambi ba ukwazu paka ama kwe so stuno lseli kusu.
That once we identify you, you come to the center of the hall.
Ubaske sakwana sakomba uzuzu ngapambi lusa kwe so stulozi lapa ngapambi luluin.
So that the process can flow as smoothly as possible.
Ukuzo gele ngubizi ambigakli.
Again, I request that you introduce yourself.
Kwa kona ndiatre luku tuzuza zise.
If you represent any organization, you may tell us that organization.
Ukuba ukono agumbutomela u nga straze likama na lo mbutu.
And thirdly, we would like to have an indication if you support this bill or you do not support it.
Bakuwa na ngaske uskaze luku tungaba yao kasa na lo mtetoyilwai okanya ukas.
I also do request that if somebody has already raised the issue you'd like to raise.
Ukubage ukona umdofuna kupamisele lo mvu esoslo mvu buswe fagili.
You get your next point or you can as well not come up and talk.
U nga solige kusowala panzuka ba kasa ikona umdabe seywa kaza lendo buswe u buza iichonawi.
So that is how we are going to operate and I'm ready to take hands now.
Zozosebenza ngono chobo ge sen lungu yelo utatisa.
Eh I do also would like to acknowledge amongst us the presence of traditional leadership in the area.
Dengatanda guchlonipa ingokele zo mtonyama esiko yo.
Which are represented by Chief Human and Chief Soluan.
Esiko na gene jengo Chief Human no Soluan.
Soluan de.
Soluani.
We, we welcome you and we appreciate your presence.
Saabule no uba kona na nati.
Before I take hands, I just want to double check, I don't see our sign language interpreter which we should be having.
Pamba ge satizandla ndaba bo no tolikuwe tu abasebenze zandla utolika.
But why are they not interpreting?
Kute mbenga toliku.
Alright, let's leave that one. You will be number one. Eh if you don't mind, please you take the seat, you will be number two. Eh number three, yes buto tweli caps, you are number three, yes. Eh number four with a greenish t-shirt and on your right, number five, yes, you are number five. And obambaye paper, you are number six. Am I missing anybody this side? You are number seven. Eh am I, you are number eight with an orange cap. I thought I'll do five-five but it's fine, you will get an opportunity. I'm gonna grab to the side. And you are number nine, right in front. And you with the left hand up, check shirt, you are number ten. And when I start, I will start this side for the next round. So, we may take the first one when we are ready.
Molweni ma Africa. I fully accept the bill, Comrade Mango. My name is Tongo Gara, a Secretary for Defence of Ben Africanist Congress of Azania. That is a member of its brigade. One of my issues is a Tony issue. That is nationalization of industries. Mister Mango, I've worked for twenty-one years at railway sportnet flats, working in the kitchen, cooking for rail workers and cleaning the yard. When privisation started, that is outsourced to Prasa Metro Rain. I trained boxers like Nsukisiskali, Linda Nonsaba, Maticani, Jolingan, Detective Mysela. Such an innocent dove. To my, to my interest. At those times, when I'm talking about nationalization, things, basic things like millimili, paraffin and sugar. That is, the prices were down. So if the, the panel can suggest that the basic issues like millimili, sugar and paraffin and petrol be down. So we can vote for you for the next five years. So that's why I was proposing.
Can we, can we give him a, can we please listen to each other, please? Yeah.
That is why Mister Mango, I was suggesting that the industry be nationalized. So that because the cost that we are in, the question of crime, rape and other aspect are caused by privisation of industries, industry. So if, if it can be nationalized, then we can be offside side. Thank you.
Greetings to the Parliament. My name is Chief Sogodu, Secretary of the Defence of Azania. Eh no Mango. Issebenze minyaga ema kitchen, issebenze garden, issebenza zima. Eh ditakashé imbeti Mango ndi ezili kaya laban jengom zugi Siskali. Nangele akashagega ama kabi so bepansi besa okelu kuti ezinkampani zinga tatwa zebu kala kodwa. Zinationalizo ukuse ama kabi so mikubo ukujasi ucha yomila leonke ikua zufike lelega. Benza okubisa kwenza go okukuse kanga ba kubekuniyo eh kunyako landlelayo sikua zukuni votel. Eh na zo gezinvoza diabule.
Morning to everyone, eh to the officials, to my colleagues that are ward committees and to Koma Amma, Happy belated Valentine's.
Ika malam, my name is Lonwabo Bukash. I represent i ward committees and also Usankor in Motherwell. I've got a slight problem Mister Chair because Orelway can do great changes for our community if we can have Orelway in our communities. That's the first one. I think Mister Chair, the only thing that I noticed is that Orel, Otransnet was supposed to have moved from town to Kucha. When is that happening? Because that's gonna make a change to our town and create jobs. And also there's vandalism when it comes to transnet property. One of them would be railway lap, there are houses here in New Brighton which are vandalized, which are white elephants. And what is happening about that? In order to create something or just one of the communities can come and have stakeholders meeting to see to it what can be done on those houses. La, I think the other one Mister Chairman would be improving a timeframe within Orelway. So that we know now today we had a stakeholders meeting, now this is happening and after six months, after a year, there's gonna be implication, implementing of certain things that Orelway and Transnet are coming with. I think lastly, Mister Chair, would be eh security issue. Which for years and years, there were community mothers and fathers and our brothers that assist the police for being C P F, Community Policing Forum. It's high time that eh as one of those people that don't get anything can be assisted and be rigged in when, when it comes to security issues. Thank you.
Greetings to the Parliament. Ika malam jingu Lonwabo Bukasha, we ward committee nasango. Ololiwa ge bangenza u wingu koe ninsi. Otrans has bekfanele ukubage asuke du lopini ayee ekucha. Kuko ge ukungwenzi gakli kuka Transnet. Ngoba ukubake kwenza njalo ma kutijwane kuboniswane. Nange akashageba ukubakonbe wekonage indwe njenge C P F ge wklanga niswe benza okubisa ba oma mota ta no puti. Bahlanganiwe ba dibane ndaweni njenge C P F bazoo ngadisa ekukati ngolo liwe ngoba sinagi yoku kusele go. Kuchinjo netesa eh lolo liwe. Kuba piya kubekho ingagi ngetasha. Diabule.
Molweni. Nani ngthosa ngalo from Department of Koka. Koka lande ya endosa i bill, ya supporter. Eh u te emphasis kakulu ku clause forty-one to forty-seven, low tetang inspection. And kungba, u, Utransnet, nere, ubelu skakulu and u compromise eh zero enforcement. Apo ku ngumluane nanjani na. Apo abantu ne nezluanyana beaamba although i, i, i uloliwe eh 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 rula. Apo kuzo bako okonza kala kwa abantu. So i safety ayiko dissolve such as ndoba. And kunga ilo enforcement, ika demand kakulu because i criminalize yarip anytime. Even na ngokstetabehambi ku kuchuthulwa i i ko papaya ku kuyaku yabiwa nezboro. Izindo suwa kwa chicks, any day, any time of the day. Tekungba inspection eh i, i compromise wepa kula, kula area. Dissolve such as eh lastly, uba i, i old buildings, zezezezold eh 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 sportnet like railway flats, convert, niku maspalat, kwa zabanda bananda ozo lhal. So nkingba, klo, klo, klo party, i, i, ilanduka i department le nu 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 maspalat, eh lo, ah we local government. Eh banga tetisana ba convert eh i old buildings to residential areas ngus.
Eh diakasa lo mtetoyilwayo, ika kulika ya forty-one to forty-seven o tetango guchlo. Eh Prasa has been compromised, eh it has compromised eh safety. Where people pass the railway without being supervised and it's not safe to do so. Eh I believe that there must be law enforcement in full force because there's lots of crime there. Eh the inspection has to be, has been compromised. And the old buildings there, that must be converted to accommodation because people, they don't have places to stay. Thank you.
Molweni, eh ika malam jingu Mampo, aliswakamwekezi di ward committee ndipine ndibeli lungu le Economic Freedom Fighters in Nelson Mandela. Eh hours, we welcome the broad objectives of the bill with the hope that singer baki sekutwa i railway i privatize we in the process. Kubaya yondu ebikia eh tetwa apa kule bill si koka namplanch. We cannot allow a situation where the governments sells or privatizes, privatizes the railway for two simple reasons. Aban bakuti, aban bakuti abana zimoto and they rely on public transports. Eh the pri, eh the private transport is expensive. Taxes are convenient but expensive as they are also privately owned. Galomasusi Economic Freedom Fighters seya mkele le bill ngus.
Ika malam jingu Mampo myegezi, eh seywa mkele lo mtetoyilwayo. Iteksizi yaturu, kanga ba ukoko lo liwe nogoba bizangono. Eh ngapeswa kwa kwa kwenzi nizenza itetu kuti seywa mkele lo lo liwe. Goba seabono kuti kwenza kuba izindozi things may be prioritize, zee 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 private, zee privatize we. Iteksizi private, so zenza lento bazozza zabukala, abantu zibiza ipogotin kakulu zebi zituri. Kante kanga indwe yenza kaya ezininzu kuti izindozi azea nationalize. Kotoge singa tando kuti zusu zebu kala, izezza zabukala ziyegu national. Saabule.
This will sell a name slalo, eh ika ma ngu kanya, ifani ngu nisho eh ndililungu lo mhlali nam walape Nelson Mandela Metro. Eh ndipinda ndibeli lungu le Economic Freedom Fighters, ndipinda ndibeli slalo Economic Freedom Fighters walape Nelson Mandela Metro. Eh slalo, we support. Slalo, we support the standardisation of training for anyone doing rail specific work. And the powers this gives to the railway safety regulator to register training institutions and certify types of training that are key to the safety and security of our railways. Despite these provisions, we think that the provision that safety inspectors must only conduct inspections between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM from Monday to Friday is ludicrous. Because safety concerns arise mainly in the hours and days not covered by the provision of this bill. We therefore recommend twenty-four hour operations. And we want to say slalo as well, that lendo ya fana, and similar to that of clinics. Because ezinyezindo, awazuz niki timeframe, ndio yokba masenzwa ngetwa sheltila, ngetwa sheltila. Lendo ndelebaleke ngayo, sifuna ndio yokba yenzeke, oni twenty-four hour basis. Siyafuna also utale ndio yokba, i railway, i keep prioritise, because it's a mode of transportation. And also we believe, ndio yokba, takfokaswa to create even new routes ezinja. For by trains, kwazua, ama ezao reduce traffic and send lelen. And also, if ya ngendisa, ndio yeye safety, abantu bazawazuz kuela, bakwazufika, kunda wabaya kuso, without having itala, because se aboni ndio yokba, i fokasiba kon, ndio yokba, kuwa kiwe inlela ezinja. Kodwa o go inlela zetrain, sazinja ya. Akofokas, ndio yokba ku create to yeye routes ezinja. I fokas, ingati, fokas, okalamakala, fana no Jopek, no Cape Town. Indawes fana nas, esfana nisa lapapa, ezya ye kwanje, zikolaps, ngolo tobe zikolapsanga. So ge ibisi stalo, so ipuili sa supporter with those recommendations and amendments. Diabule, slalo.
Diabule sa slalo, di ngunisho, ilungule EFF, slalo. We support the issue of railway, ngena yemiba yozu kuseleko. Kuaye sitela ndio yokba aba sholi, ba kensegi, sokba aba shola, twenty-four hours. Ukuensegi sa kuseleko. Siyafuna ndio yokba umba ololiwe, uphakani selo, okanyee, ubenumba opambile. Ukwenza, uka uke xe, ndio yok tanaana, ndeleni. Kuaye inlela, ndio kapekaya, uka indela ziyakiwa, kodwa inlela zololiwe, zona aziwoywa. So sitela uke uke uko apa epai. Seabule.
Diabule sa gusla, neskwa basake. Ikama ngukosi yokolo, ifani ngunam, abanyabanda zngusai. The representative ombuto we EFF. We welcome the broad objectives of the bill, but the abolishment of the railway police has led to serious problems in ensuring safety on South African railways. As a result, there has been a dramatic decline, not only in the safety of the passengers, but also in the ability of Prasa to safeguard critical rail infrastructure. We are pleading with you to return the railways police over and above the private security that is normally outsourced by the government. For more effective security and accountability, it will be wise to insource the private security. The bill provides for an overhaul of the safety and health systems in our railways and provides legislative power to inspectors to inspect the seeds of material that may pose hazard to safety of people and the railway itself. Care must be taken, however, to ensure that this provision is not useful to target informal traders who have used the railways to make a living for years. We have actually seen that already in some areas. Instead of focusing on safety, Prasa recently, but, Prasa recently put a ban on church services and trains. Which got us thinking, what has lifting workahs spirits before starting work got to do with safety? We are advising and pleading to you comrades, that that ban must be removed. People abonza, abasebenzi, ngongo moya, must be given an opportunity to do so. Because yes, na etalando, eskutaze, eskutaze, uke uke so onga etafli, ndiabandwa nabeza, abandwa nabeitu. Thank you.
Madiswasale, gusla, konya neskwa basake. Ikamalam, di ngu ngokosi yokolo, mami, bandisa jengosain abandazu, ndililungule EFF. Ndalo mkele ombono we bill, esuweke weyu. Inaki uki ama polisa, abantu siflisha ngata ba kuseleka, apa ba aba kona. Onokata aba seko, umteto, otu, funale uke uke ona, abantu aba saichonga indawo, umshande zono. Kodwa inga kumbikwa, uko abantu aba sebenzi sa ololiwe. Abantu aba tengi sayo, seabule, ngoba uke ona, umteto onga aba fubelio, uka ba aba tengise. Apo ku kona i ololiwe. Sitela uki aba abantu, uke uke ge, aba tengise, ngoba hinlela, aba sebenzi la ngalo, insa apo sa, diabule.
Potani. Diabule se etafli. Nganga, nitsi basayo. Mpati shelo. Eyo na ndingamalja, se lo umteto, siyautanda se wa mkele kakulu, lo nisa na. Kodwa ge, ndifuna ge, ndichonge, apimzi nasekaya jenge ngus. Ikamalam, di ngu chi, psulile soluandla, ti mele, ubukus iba malja ambe. Isbo ngosam, ndingulhami, nusha, nusha, tufakati, ngodno bo, mta telen, shuku. Diabule, lokoka lu government ezee apa uki. Azofuni imbono zetu, ba imbono zetu ziti. Di kungba, luhulume ndo, lubalule kleyo elo. Ninga lhalé parlamente, ni mani nisiva, uka tina, klemi tetu, sifunu kulunge be yio. Kapandla kweitu, ayso bipindi, aynow zilunge. Yao tuzilunge, ge uke uke sebenzo, nupad kweitu, konye nani. Uka ni kwazon ndawonje, sibe kwe si ti, es ngukilizi tu. Mshao mbike mandize, ge mpati shelo, kui 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 lendawo uka la, pamko banti geneke kui safety, ma kenkali uka la klumzu asekaya. Jenge traditional leader, echonge ne, nabantu ba kukweitu. Di kunga, mpati, eyo na dibalule kleyo uka la. Izmilo za abantu ba kukweitu. Umzake lo. Uhulume ndo, lia zenza, ngama nyama kwa xagai zindo. Pataba ndwa nabeitu. Ba bazo nagalise. Sibe azazindo uhulumende zenza latina. Siyafuna ge, uki pamko banti se kuniparlamente, ntete nisizwisa kukweitu. Ne ngus, ezuzilapa. Ti ti uhulumende, gamandi, uzifumi lezo, ngus, ngaske azusupport. Ngoba, eya tunka keba, kukulungi sa. Abantu anabiliswa kukweitu, abantu anabiliswa ba kukweitu. Izmilo, usobo ba zpetengalo, nogo, aylo shobo, lilungi le eyo. Umzake. Kana uchisa i clinic. Kaza olala ksa sa ngomso, kufuneka i clinic, anteti pana paya, pati ndenzalindoba. Ti ti kan geneke uhulumende, ndibende zilungsi le ndio ndisbonayo, etse traditional leaders, ndisbonayo zenza kapakui community ya. Kau chisa i skolo. Tina, keta xale tu lo funda, i skolo ibisi se community. Mzali ngamnye, ebeposa imecho kui skolo. Ngoba lokasa skolo, sesa ochinchimeko, ye kaya la, kenalomta. Ngoko iskolos etu, ziyachisa, kwenzo ayonge indo, enga lunganga, ebange, ndo uka ba. Ezizindo sifuna uka uhulumende. Uhulumende sokasenza zinto ezinye, ngalo longe kwa esha. Andipekisika uhulumende geneke ali, kesa peksa kulundula kukweitu. Na kuingusizi etu, zelizwa kukweitu. Indeed, funaka sake i family values, ezpele layo kui community etu. Ngoba, umda no indota na, lichoni, le community, ekufuneka ndoba, nomzali. Achonge, achonge skolo zetu, siachonge zereway, kutetwa ngazo, siachonge ngazo, siyeke nogu chisa. Di ayazis koni zinto ez zenza, sibino msi ndo. Kodwa lipelili kwa xalo kchisa, ngaske ngoku, si tetatetane. Si kosos tij, ngusok tetatetana. Uka ba aba sifana, aba subomba masambe, ndi sepeke, ndi sepeke kuingulaswa umteto. Le ya ibienziwe indo, ingapindwa, kuabi ni nakatatu. Kukulunga izmilo zetu ke ezo. Ngoba loko kikka xachinchila, sekweni kwa esha, uhulumende ngoweitu, besimfotel. Kuba lulegele, uhulumende uweitu, lo besimfotel, simlungise, enze lendo, sifuna. Because, pakui fruto mchada, kwe da o eti, people shall govern. Si ti abantu aba abana uka ulaula, i lizwe, tinabantu.
Asikubeze la, getat.
Yes. Madize ke, ku uhulume ndo ke onu, kuapa kule sipi. Tinga, tinga kia nga kwa esha, ndifunuka uki mla, pambe ko kuba, singe ne kulenda, ngaske. Uhulumende, abantu aba aba tengi sayo. Bachonge kakulu, benzel, nwasi shelters. Si pinde foot, ndibeke umnuwain double eti, twenty-four hours. Uke uki, abantu aba kata, imipifuna abantu anabeitu. Ne train ezizi etu, si ti make sure, ndoba siyavale, siyavale, si kanga, uka umto ka kwazuke kengwa, etse training. Kona kona kona, nisa uku lisa economy, lizwa kukweitu. Diabule, lampa ti shelo, kakulu, ndi tigus. Kama.
Greetings to the parliament, protocol observed. We support the bill. As a chief, I must look out for my community. Thank you, parliament, for coming to us and hearing our views. As a traditional leader, the behaviour of our people sometimes. The government build infrastructures, were asked to assist us to better our lives. But our children damage those infrastructures, so we must reprimand our children. I am referring to the community, that we must take care of our things and take pride in what we have. Coming to the issue of the day, government must consider our children by building centres. And guards must be in sight. And even in the trains, there must be guards there for the safety of our people. Thank you.
Madbulise, wiskwa basase parliament. Di ngute mbelenkusini kama, wakono joko, di nyelinseni ngumapango. Di kuwa ward forty-six, ekarier. Di ward committee. Di member ombuto, i African National Congress. Kalukala klandawu, tibe specific, kui rural areas. Apo ke mshao besasalilo akona. Sasiyazi train tina, ngokuwa besporuin. Eighty percent were railway, I think, uamba, kweza ndawu. Di nomnwe no, kwenza, ndoba. Abantu aba sala imapanjen, ba empowerishwe, kule bill. Ngeliti, okoka la, ba kupimbala shiplant, mshao mbiza walisboro. Uke uke sache etraining, or equipment, before i train, ibe iesa. Ibe imbala ikuchiwa, okanyee, ibe imbala, uke uke ekommunication. Or such a workshop or a training. Eza empowerisha, aba abantu ba kuba imbala. Ku kangelo i fencing ya, bo ba, i hundred percent, nganana, nina ngoba. Ingomo iako kelwa. Umkuu biwetrain, ayaz, ndoba. Ingomo zidule, whatever communication eza obe, iyalande lo ngelo trash. Fana mshao mbe, uko indawu, ezufunulungiswa, klo area, ya lo farmer. Abantu ba lo farmer, ngoba abantu ba se farmer ba pangela, ba pangela, ez ngomin kwa kpele. Ku kangelo, ndoba, na akunawu, akunawu vulo solo, ndoba, ba bebayakasha on that part, dula area. Ku kulo damage, ikona, ikonayo apo ema farm. Uke uke uzawo ngwa, ndoba, such an accident, how to claim, how to report, ba empowerishwe, abantu aba sala yoz farmer. Diye kutala la wa safety, generally. Uprasa si vil, ndoba, ubesengagi, kuitalala wa safety. Ninzi ke, nemalilontrinki, yonge lando, no nenkesho, kodas nendueti. Ez big guns, big companies, ziyaskeela. Si koshwa uka esha, singono kada. Endisa andamayonwa kule process. Sea ingonele, ndutike, ma uke vulo mesho, ku kangelo, ku pofti porresti, ngoba. Ndoba, ma unge ne, esengampani. Sea ayaz ba uzonge ne big guns. Tina asna experience, and mshambi asfigelele kui requirements. Ezautisufuwe. Kule process ya kesho, ye yonokata. Sea ekela lo ndu, ndoba. Ma inga bi given that, uzonge na, uzbamban, afangi ngampaniaka, ayoka esha. Mas kubane, mas balan, mas balan, zene ngus.
Greetings to the committee. My name is Tembe, ndingusini nonjoko. I am from ward six, forty-six. I am a ward committer, committee, and I am a ANC member. I am going to focus on rural areas. There are people who are living in these areas, and they need their railway stations. And we are of the view that these people should be trained, the people that are staying around these areas should be trained. And there should be communication between the village and the Prasa or transnet to say there will be certain times that the livestock will be released to go to, to go and graze. But we need, the people, like the train drivers should know about the times the livestock will be out there. So that when you, by any chance happen to kill a cow, you will have to pay for the damage that you have caused. The livestock that are out there, there's a lot of damages that are happening, and people are being fined for those damages. Then I will go to safety. Prasa, there's a need for including people that are from these areas in terms of employment. These people are excluded by the companies, the big companies that come and do the work around the area. Be it the work that they need to fence the area that are having these railway stations. And because we are inexperienced without requirements, then we do not get employed by these companies. So we request you to please look into that, and make it possible for us to have employment. Thank you.
Madbulise apa, mnanti ngokosa zana, wakua sobantu, depoma glamswe ANC, and ANC Women's League. Okoka la, madibule, the parliament, for taking Okokala mandibulele parliamente for taking services closer to the people. Mandibulele londo. Umnanza uteta kwe talali railway and safety. Kobba man tetengati because tinaskula pe New Brighton asiyazi train singabanyi. But kuko ne New Brighton Station elap siaybonya vandalize. Obi itrains make sure omni besano sokha apa zazi sebenza. But today, when you look at the conditions, ye train apasquas tien locally train ap. Because pa ya there is no security. But in the pinidi proposal indoba t'akuriviva la New Brighton. La station, i vandalizing my job. Wakona is security abantu. Wakangi na in and out of the railway station first ne passengers naso spes kui safety. Di pinidi tu railway lo. Ni pili s'ayamgeela. It can take, the railway can do more for our community. Most one of the objectives, zele railway utama izebantu inizo pasalepil. One is to ensure that they are making a profit. We want the railway to work and work for the community. And that railway must assist our community in terms of employment, kui youth and women in particular. Pa kuteesho pa ya okokamela city pambili ngalepil pambili.
Greetings to the parliament. My name is Ngozazana Sobantu. I'm from the A N C Women's League. I thank the parliament for bringing services to the people. Eh the railway station is vandalized, there's no security there. The safety eh our of the passengers is eh it's concerning. But in in all of that, we support the bill because it helps the people. The railway helps the people and it must work. And it must assist in employment of our youth that we able to get an employment for our community. I say the bill must continue. I support it.
S'abulela kwabo batebe zanga pambili. Thank you for those who came first before the last speaker speaks. I would like to take the next round of hands. So that we can eh flow very nicely. So I will start this side. So number one, Mama, let's get closer. Number two, Budi Onakep. Eh. Number three, Budilo Onakepe Marun. Number four, Mama, One Sanleseraitewek. Number five, Buto Peti Pepe Pezulu. Eh. Gompendimposleongapa. Oh, alright, everybody will get a chance. Number six. Yeah. Eh number seven, number eight, Budi. Yeah, oka number eight. Number nine. Eh the first time I took more here, I'm balancing the scales. Number ten. Alright. Obuti oba olapunga kobek. While those ones are taking their seats. Thank you.
Eh honorable Chairperson. And committee eh members of the community, I greet you in the name of the Lord. Eh my contribution Chairperson is that for many years railway have failed our communities. I remember maybe ten years or fifteen years ago, I used to stay on the farming area. Where cars and taxis are competing with the train. So it's quite a sad story. Fourteen people perish on that day of one family. So what happened? To date. Eh the railways are non-compliant in terms of the state safety standard. On downships and eh towns, there are robots. But on railway lines, there's nothing that stops a taxi or a car that can compete with the train. So it's quite a sad story. But I support the bill. Because there's no, nothing that stop a person from competing with the train. Eh secondly. Eh I will suggest that eh there must be a consolidated approach with our local municipalities. Because. There should be something that that eh reduces the speed of eh a public transport. And also education of eh educating our communities. Those communities who are farming around those eh railway lines. Eh. I also support the community participation where information sharing is quite critical. Because to sit here and say we adopt this bill, it will be a futile exercise if our communities are not involved in what we are trying to achieve here. So it will be maybe a good idea if we can create eh those eh safety measures that you put. Eh especially now that eh there's lots of vandalism. Buildings also eh form the threat, especially of railways along our communities. Because there's a lot of eh scrap metals in those buildings. You'll find out that there's a lot of eh thugs that are eh especially somewhere here in PE. Also the issue of employment. Eh before, many years ago, before nineteen ninety-four. There were workers who were working on railways on a daily basis. So they. They would have been avoid issues of eh taking eh railway lines. They should have been avoided long ago, especially if those maintenance guys who are working on railway lines on a daily basis. I think eh you can use those low skills people and employ them to go along the railway lines on a daily basis. To check if there's no vandalism on on railway lines. The issue of employment. In these days, we voted this government of the A N C into power. But when they came there, they said eighteen to thirty-five. But what about those who are family members who are leading their families who are unemployed? Eh sitting at home, at least the the age limit must be abolished. And people. You can imagine when the people said, you don't qualify. Especially if you are thirty-six years and over. But you'll find out most companies, they will employ even a sixty-year-old, especially if you have the capacity. Eh as I'm sitting here, I'm unemployed, you know, for many years. But as you sit there, you must go back and consider us also when you make these legislations. Thank you very much.
Ikamalama tibungnaye di si Thomas. S'chalotso npegle kuinyenekomi ndabuli sange kamalenge ka Yesu Christu. Ololo liwa passport ele. Kubba itex nemo otazukupisa nanololiwe. Ez lokushin kukho i robot, ez lokushin kukone robots. Ta uamba nasitulopin. Kotwa ka fumanseka uambesporoin akukoz robots ez azaukazu kuti mayime. Mtomagamu kanyi moto maziluli. Benduzo t'abisa kubeku indlela omasbala basenza nanayo na bezotutu. Ukufundi sa uluntu. Ikakulu genaba bantu balimayo ekalian kwezboro. Ndiya ukasa lomte tu ilayo. Kotwa kuyakasa kubalilizi kubanjese ngateta nji. Kotwa ge kufunega ukensele, ukenseki su ukuselego. Njoba kuko ulua pulo mte tu olunins. Njoba kuyagutengiswe insimbi bakona batata insimbi kui zboro zololiwe bamaba yo ztengisa ngoba zinizi indau apo utengiswa kona insimbi. Baige apo bayo umo shabantu batate ezunsimbi. Wakukho abantu ba besenza zboroin yonge imila. Ndiya ngaba kubeku kuyagbanjalu kubeku nabantu milale. Bizagwenza londo leo kunye ipewluwa pulo mte tu. Ukukasaka abantu ge abane mi niaga isumele zbozo ukuya ku thirty-five. Eh iinga ikingoba namdhiela nsebenzi. And londo yenzwain tokba kuti kukasaka kukasewe oh 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 abanga banale mi niaga besendi yichilo. One obasheli yema kaya bebeno ngeti sabekutaza bantu. Bizagwenza njani ge kanga ba kobba ez ni kampanesabukalazi abakasha bantu be na sixty. Kotwa tinasquazu kashwesinda weninga ngayoba sibandwa imi niaga. Bezazalela ge nyani s'atelen ngalelo eskalazuzu tinkos.
Eh mandis bulisele aphe parliamente. Di bulise nabashali boonge nchikalele keniti kamalika Yesu Christu. Imbo umnan tibnomatile kokoma. Di lilungulka A N C, di ward committee kwa seventeen. Ndiya ukasa lombono ka transmiti. Tu thasa ndisiva kapisungu namtu ebekula esebensi train t'isaleweka. Bendu kwa uamba ngetrain uzeba ya pela etrain. Bendu yamba ngetrain ikwandi sia ekaha ya kofinva ya pela etrain. Kukundia vuya kai bu etrain because as public transport, s'zenzi lingos eznis. Kui train, ubukazu kukupukishela nimbasha yako. Iteta mnefinchar, uyayukishela itadwe ikotuswe. Apa ngoki public transport kunzima ba imbasha zukotuke. So ngondia ukasa ke ngoku indoba kay bu ya etrain. Kotwa uloyiko lam zeh public transport nalomulo unaga. Yonando ke ngoku uhulmende funake e vula amelu kasi nkuiseli train. I public transport s'isauki nati etrain itati business etu. So kulendwe business. So ngoku funakuvulwe amelu ba s'isau sebenza nanjani. Ba akotraini yamba yungu. Kusenza only lays to get tinacha njali njali. Awkazongo kuphum umnan dyayfuni train ba walonseli koduk. Na ngonge istas funanpeke ka ekap ana train funaka ndiye kwezbus. Kunzima. Kotwa ken dyayvuyela kai bu etrain dyaythasa ngokonene. Nemissebenzi zo vuleleka. Kulungiswe neziz poro zibiwayo. Kukonya kapasake sahamba singoma ma be Women's League. Abantu ana bayaya yenzintela yonge na be funutata ezizindo pa kutriva. Sasinolo yiko sipegake pitori. Makukuku uhulmende makaka kenyise abantu bomte tu apa ez traini makaka kenyise tinkos.
Greetings to the parliament. Eh I greet you in the name of Jesus Christ. I'm Nomatile. I'm eh community mem, I'm a committee, I'm a ward committee in ward seven. I support the bill. I used to use the train from Cape Town going home, but there are no longer taxis anymore. Because eh I don't know the reason. But I'm very happy that the taxi eh the train is coming back because a lot of accidents that are happening, even you using taxis or buses. I fear because whenever there's an issue about the train, the taxis and the bus fight over there because they're fighting for their business. But in overall, I I support the bill and I believe that the railway lines must be fixed. Thank you.
Yes. Eh mandis bulisele ki parliamente abantu. T'isbulisele kubanda balapa ngapaka atibonke kukuxia xiana kwabo. Inyenge induindro ipaga misapa kukasipil. Ikamalama mgsugiswa kascho. Ward committee ka forty-five. Lilungule African National Congress. Si sukaglamsha basikarija. Siti kengalo mtkimbi so kritiwu. Yatan du libaleka karija. Di kala ke nibeki ngualasela umtkimbu wasikarija. Ingakumpi kumtkimbi wale train kutetwangayo. Di minetamsa ngakakulu kasi sebenzi sa etrain. Pa kui seventies, uzochoki eighties zade zapelasia kala ke indobana ngaba ikualaselu indava ya sakarija. Yatan du libaleka kakulu tinkos.
Greetings to the sub eh to the parliament. I support the bill. I am Zugi Sistoto from ward seven thirty-five. I am from A N C. I I I'm begging you to consider karija. Eh I used to use the train from the seventies, but the train stopped. But I just stand that you really consider karija. Thank you.
Greetings to everybody. Eh let me start by thanking the Department of Transport on the rail, eh especially while we're here. My name is Vuluetu Geene from ward fifteen. I'm representing youth there as a ward committee member of the African National Congress. I'm here on behalf of the people that, that I would say the department and railway has failed. There are people that lives at the railway flats here in New Brighton. We go there time and time again. Timously going to transnet offices. Those people, they are fighting for ownership. Those people, their living condition is very dire. I would like to ask parliament or any representative to look at the situation that is happening there. Secondly, as young as I am, I used to use the New Brighton line from here to town on a daily basis when I used to attend school. But Covid came. Everything came to a halt. And then after Covid, the train station, it's in dire situation. And I used to enjoy using the train between Port Elizabeth and Karieja today. The stations are so vandalized. Last week, I was going to Greymstown. It was half past five in the morning. I saw six boys digging. I don't know if it's eh electricity cables or what, but I had to go back because I was scared for myself. So I would like to say that please bring back, even if the station is not working, because we are using the bridge there at New Brighton. Some of us on a daily basis because to save costs. Please bring back those guys that were employed there as the railway station police. I thank you.
Greetings to the eh diabuli sakuipalamente. Ikamalama tibungu kuvi yolu itu geene was ward fifteen. Ndimele ulucha ke kui A N C, but ndifilisho kuti ndiziva ukuti isabe elusport ele. S'akui offices asetransnete singafumali ngendondi akela ni itateli ngalelo lendonike ni ofiga pa kweza office sase transnete. Bendu sebenza uloliwe hogo ndesa fund. But iinga ikingoku iztishi zimoshiwe. Eh benditende yamba ndivukekse ngabo five ndesa yamba ngayogotuka ndabaleka ndibona makwengwe amatanda atwe eh humba.
Amatanda atwe eh humba. And ndinga zonoba humba indoazinjenge cable. Kotanda konba man di baleka bantu tugile. Ko istalo samukuti nibuiso ololiwe, engos.
Man disbulisele. Kuingokele zonke ezenga pambili. Ikamalam gunasitalo kwalaa. Osuka kui Alex Matikinga Cluster. Oi word committee kuwa word 58. Eh, oli lungu le African National Congress. Ndikale ngoku ti, siaya mkelipill. Ndize, glenda wo. Ndikengoba, utransnet. Ngomkuluwa nomninawa nobrassa. Ezisinduazochuki. Apa, sasitenge si webonanje. Ngokwa kiwa kwezboro apa pakati. Utin ngokwalapa eh motherwell. Kwako, nemepu eh bonisayo. Obange nyamin, sisa umgumla glenda uzboro. Sibona kutetwaka. Sitali mvuselelo bituna, ngoba siastenga. Okwesibini. Ininsige eh renovation efunu kwenziwa. Kwezizboro. Na kuis dish yetu. Aznan kangeleko inke kwa pela. Esitala lendo ka, kufagwa lotenda yokwenza that renovations. Kweziz dish. Ni keni ma considerishé. Osoma xesheni baba ndoba mnyama. Where the puma njani niteenda, kotwa tikala sakeba considerishoe. Ngoba siteta ngemillions. Well, it's come kutwa kwenziwe renovations. Ndikarete, ndiyeye glenda wo. Isa bangati sitetindwe ye kotwa ngeguba sifunuku i emphasize lendo indobi vagale. Apes officeini, zo transnet. Noko ba ninza abantu sebekuliile. Wi no oba nifuna ba bantu ba ne experience. Kotwa kakeni 32 ba, lo ba no go this time. Keni chongo ulucha la sekaya. Lendo nitikanisa uyenza, ni 32 baleno. Basii we kui trainings. Baso kwazuka qualifier for ezis tuba si xela abantu sebekuliile noko. Suppose kutala beses pensioni. Siayazi ngotata bamakaya. Kotwa, it's over long term guys. Sitala no go ni ba kupi this time. Keni faka banta basabacha. Ukwenzele indoba, umdomcha. U, unemi bono, yokua kalenda wa kuyonge ntlele yodwa. Imi bone mi cha, imi bone fresh. Ukwenzele sizindwa, sikwazuka buuka nati kui Nelson Mandela medro. Situnoba siyangelewe, betuna noko abantu basiparlemente ba bono mbono mche. Kabentwendwe la kweziz dish zololiwe betu. Kaloma azwi, andisagwenza be manins. Siakela ingesho kubantu anabetu, engos.
Greetings to the leaders. I am Nos Telo Kwalaa from Alex Matikinga Cluster. Eh, I am a member of the ANC. We welcome the bill first. I think transnet and prasa are the same. Initially, we were promised that railways will be built. And there was a map demonstrating where the railway will be. And we need to revive that idea. The second point is that there is a lot of renovation that needs to be done. Eh, and when you do that, please consider black businesses. Because in this case, we speak of millions that are involved. It will be like we repeat the same thing, but we want to emphasize the issue. Another issue is, in the offices, there are very old people. Please look for the younger blood. And train them so that they are able to qualify and occupy those offices. Please place young people. Because young people have new, fresh and innovative ideas. Thank you.
Eh, molwen bashal, basikabeka. Eh, and to the parliamentary committees. Thank you and welcome to PPS. Security, safety is a standard that we must never compromise in our country. Eh, this infrastructure will help reduce traffic fatalities. Abantu be tuba populaesinteleen. When traveling home, local. Bakilo kya, by trucks carrying raw materials from mines. Kupine kya kubekunengosi because there's a lot of logistic companies. These logistic companies were meant to create jobs. But these logistic companies directly contributed to the collapse of the rail system in our country. So, in Europe, we see beautiful rail. And we want beautiful rail for our own country. The existing infrastructure must be improved. And infrastructure that is new must be built. And this bill precisely talks to that. We are facing a lot of economic challenges. A high cost of fuel. And the high living conditions that our people are facing every day. The difference between traveling by rail from New Brighton to the CBD and the taxi industry, which is privately owned, is more than 10 rand. By bringing back rail, you allow someone from New Brighton to travel to Yuthine by only paying 7.50. So economically, this bill makes sense. And our people need this bill. Our people need rail transportation. Our people are dying on the roads of this country. We have seriously dangerous roads. In ending, please create jobs for young people. And please train young people to participate in this rail network infrastructure. And also, Eastern Cape is one of the poorest provinces in South Africa. Most of us cannot afford to even travel to Houghton and look for a job or to Cape Town. But, Oh Mama Bebe la apa kya, they was talking about how beautiful they used to travel during apartheid. Apartheid is over. It's a new democratic society. And we need this rail infrastructure because we need to inter-travel cheaply, engos.
Eh, greetings. And parliament, my name is Tato. The first issue I would like to speak on is the matter relating to security, safety. That must not be compromised. As it will reduce fatalities because there are a lot of accidents as a result of trucks and logistics companies. And secondly, logistic companies were meant to create jobs, but it collapses the railway system. For example, Europe has beautiful rails. Another issue we have, eh, a problem regarding the economy and the living conditions of our people. The distance from New Brighton, for instance, to CBD, costs more than 10 rand. By allowing or by bringing rail, for instance, it will cost 7 runs to go to Yuthine. Ngelivalayo, imisebenzi. Eh, kufuneka yenzi uwe kwa yivumele ulucha lutate ngakheba. Askwazi nokuya eh Houghton, siyofuna imisebenzi. Kwa yeh eh askwazi ukuu eh tetan gennda ba, ye yokalu kalu lokanyeh apartheid. Ngoba ya apartheid isele ya pela, engos.
Molweni, disbulisele namapa ekabeka nasiparlemente. Lo umiapa kunomzamo stela fuma zonke. Upuma pa kui Nelson Mandela Bay disability forum. Pa ku special program units. Yeli o annually, kubako ethims around eh disability by the government. Nati si yfora, ngoki ana besi mainstreama eh disability. Besina yoi ethim wishes isah kubekakeka. Ibiziti, how can we as all government sectors and Nelson Mandela Bay citizen make Nelson Mandela Bay accessible for people with disabilities? If okas yetu being eh infra- infrastructure. And inombuzo kengoku, ni na railway. How can you give eh confidence or assure people living with disability? Ukubani na ninazo eh devices or eh equipment payakololiwe benu to accommodate people living with disabilities? For instance, eh disability azifani. Kukona eh wheelchairs, kukona bamba ngaye walker ezin ndonga abanga bonio. Kukona abantu abamba ngerems ezantimbi. Kuyaku, abantaba netisabitinga bantu nababa yavota andibas fundile abanye babo. Kuyaku tumtune netisabitu funu apply, ufuman snibalenda u akfuneke yekui o u applyle. I traini i convenient ifutwa ba unokweli traini ilula lenda wo, uyaku. But can you guarantee lamtu bangai kuela la traini? Because we observation yetu aziko convenient i train for abantaba netisability. Okanyeh kukona umtu apa pakati kuloliwo one epilepsy, isi fosokuwa. Ngaba, ikone device eh koyope traini yokbiza unyeto. Utin ureilwe ikusituwesinesinjalo. Or i trainzinazo ispace for eh wheelchairs. And isanga okula, I rather ask, ne, because activism is not about, is not about fighting. It's asking, challenging, blah blah blah. Pa ku close 48, kweza operators. Utetange, get you these operators, I assume ba kutetwa. Get kargi eh operators eh traini, ababa pakit platform, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming. But utetange incident, oh eh occurrence, ezenzekapake pa. Itu tis eh operator after a missing prevention plan. Because mnandi kuele i train for Dennis eh Cape Town pilot, kwa metropolitan from Langatu Belve. Kukona abanta abanga planga kakla abatando yabula. Yo kargis, kutwas kargi pe Cape Town, would say amaniya pamba analam. Are you, what are you doing in kui staff senu? Eh awareness eh program eh ninazu, ukala apa pakati kui staff. Ukupumela ngapakache bantu in terms of eh transportation eh train for people with disabilities. Again, ndize.
Asit, asit bebeze.
Kiba kya. Ndize, afaku, kui interpreter through to you chepesindi, bona okoi minga. U sisilowenzi sign language. I assume ba kukona abantu, ah, 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 ba, ba signe layo. But she's missing the whole part of abantbalapenfa kwabo. Because ni tunyebama ndisena abantu abakubasekle, they might be umtu okubasekle yongava apa party. Lamtu is missing the whole interpretation. So andi kwazi ukutindi yaya mkela. Okanyeh ndiyamkeli i bill until, because tanfunda es close 71 kind, eveketa omdonete disability. Ifa banti tinda yamkeli ndabanda abatengis, until good address where es questions. Then maybe disability forum, inga tetindeva na yonorelway, engos.
All right, maslungisela ndawie ya abantu who might be here, who have got a need of eh sign language. The reason umtu eh sign language is standing there is because the program is being televised. So it's for those people who are watching either on TV or YouTube or any other platform. But should there be anybody who is here, who is in need of sign language interpretation, they must please indicate, they, we will try and make sure that they come forward where they could also see the lady who's doing eh sign language interpretation. Bendisiti kya ubanga bukon umduangaba ufuna ukuba, okanyeh usiyeka ngemva kuba emfunu bona eh sign language le. Siakela indogoba na azibona galise, ba lungiselelwindao. Apa bano ukwazuba ba bone lumtu wenza le eh sign language interpretation. Ngoba ababa bami apa ngakumbi. Nango ni nyani obaba ngaposaba ndaba lapa. Kotwa e ona ndawa ba jongisiku yonga, bamba ballile kaya ababukele kuma bona kude, na kwezi nyindlen. Kotwa kelayi vezwe ngusisi i nyani ona. Sitige ubanga bukon umdonjalo. Makazazi siakona makosase parlemente sa uzamba ba lungiselelwindayo xala.
Greetings, my name is Nomzamo Stella Vumazonge for Nelson Mandela, Nelson Mandela Bay Disability Special Programs Unit in Ka Becha. As a forum, we have a theme that says how can we be, how can we be accessible to all government sectors? We have, as a forum, we have a theme. So, how do you assure the people with disabilities safety and accessibility to the trains, especially those who have wheelchairs, who are using wheelchairs? I would say I would support the bill or not, but I want to first put it to you and consider those people with disabilities. Because as you were talking, I did, even as I read the bill, I don't see anything that states people with disabilities, anything concerning disabilities. There are people with, who are mentally disturbed, who will be roaming around the railway stations or sometimes use the train, do those people get considered as well? As I see the sign language interpreter facing at the front and I'm concerned because I'm concerned about people with disabilities, what about those at the back who can't see, who is not able to access the interpreting? Would you please consider that? Thank you.
Molweni, molweni, lutetapa ngutemba Piliso. Diya ono malo mtetu slomelo, karaluei. Kotwa, tinendo eti, funeges ukala sele, ukwenze indogoba. Namando endewitwa se Parliament emge nendo siboni layo, nendo saskati sinazo. Apa, tisa utanda ukwenza indelotobo. Kindo karaluei, iti banse nendo esututi ipasi. Ureluei ufanelu ba akuseleke ku ba, be ne engosi esinenzzi be seseka. Be kusichaa matroko nen na matroko wa yo, makarichu wa yo. Kufune ba ukurmeenda kupi i piliyonu, kukulungisa esozin do. Kubeko ingo zasenseka wakakona guruluei, indogoba ufumane iztimela sichai sana. Kusifaa abantu, binga bandaku ituke abo, nosisi betu no bazalbetu. Sisi nendo smelbazi yakualaselewa esu. Kunge ngoba, tisa utela nangu, indogoba, izkulu zaba patiso abalapa, bakualasele ne meko ipasi. Ku ba uwa kuwa ukuwa ku ipasi, noku faku abantu, beksan ukuwa ipasi ngoku. Baninza bandabonza geleyo, baninza bapume imipefumo. Diakale esozin doke abase Parliament de bage bage tata bage kualasele. Kuba galoku, ipasi ikukwia nguntu. Singa zikwaga ngukwenze genjani do ba iwe. Tiso pinenda ndikela ureluei. Abena lo kaka mshelawana, nosoma shishina bakulaya basakasayo, iko hope. Awzika sangemali. Ku ba galoku ngai zautureluei akuselewe, beksapo zba zikonizi security esu zautjonga. Nabandabazakualasele, inmeko yokusele ukaraluei. Diakonda koso masushina basakulayo, bakona bayenza yo indyo ba, banganazu se churit. Abakwazuk baba ngatiba tokta otangureluei. Bakwazuk faka abantu baba baba tshleyo, kaloku indala, urelueka sobana imali ndala yo onke. Ukuisusa, funegatashenmna somashishini, mna ni htlale indotasha umtu. Zekusukindala ge la kaya, diya mtala kureluya zekala selelo ndole yo. Zebeyanzeka, na layan delela, siyazibona izkukula, izkukulasu amoshila makaya. Izkukulasu itati limipefumo. Nendele ngoku nimisututi ziyawa, ndikela zimoshua zizkukula. Na lapo ndiakale nubazi ziskualaselezo esin do. Kunga atiku kosoma shishini, kuka tata komaspa baza sese ngokuwa abo izin do. Be kmelebaze ngoko somashishini, kuwa be valela imali zo somashishini. Diakalela ndiapela ikolo ngosinu.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Temba Piliso. I applaud the statement from Railway and in particular Parliament. But I will speak about the issue of buses and trains. Regarding trains, eh they catch fire and sometimes there are accidents as a result of collision and that requires aid and attention. Buses kill a number of people and there are so many people who have died because of buses and accidents. So Parliament needs to take notice of that. I also request Railway to consider developing businesses and in particular the developing ones and in respect of security purposes in order to deal with poverty in underdeveloped areas. Another issue that needs attention is that of floods and potholes because eh they will lead to many accidents. And I request the municipality to give businesses to those that are developing because we cannot allow the municipality to do the tasks that can be done by the developing or underdeveloped businesses. Thank you.
Manbulise ku ngokela zikoyo, slalo. Ne, ne watkomite zikoyo. Ti bulise ku nyene nemibutwe koyo iglenao. Oteta yo ngunesisa kwa Matrose pa kawa twenty. Eh na yulilo nguli ANC. Mna slalo, tisa uteta, diyamkela kokala, eh ndi adopta i bill. Oku amke kukubosa kla clause forty-eight, lo utetange get duties of eh operator. I would like to ask, indoba ngaba, do you, do you visit ezilantuka eh 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 operators? Do they visit schools that are near to our communities? So that they make sure indoba sinazo iskolo apa, esinazo, ezisabenza ngi engineering. I don't know if they do have a relationship nesa school zikoyo because why to know about i i landuka i railway, okanye utransnet ubizine, ne college uchizika ia, ne nememus if so. Eh ku ye, kukala age paka thirty-six to forty. Siya iboni employment eh, nusai boni leadership eh too, but what do you do ngaba abantu, ba ku thirty-six and above? Because, kasta na ngeskolo nabandabaskaya ngabandaba yangpayan. Ah, ndiengoku tinabandabala pelukshin, asikwazufikeleleka kozosin. Kukala clause, nito leke Apa, kuku clause fifty, that deal with investigations or not happy with event eh koyo. There is a issue of prasa, prasa musi, ngumnina okanye ngumkuluwa kaka transnests, ne? Ku kundev, kukwa i station eh zikoyo pasa, banga tsetindwe. Esas station is, bakona os security ba kwa prasa, bat balala ku indawesu rongo. Indawesu rongo, ee esikopugleyo kungeni mvula, bat kukabantu bina abasebenze lanina. Ti teleani balonipe, balala bapangele ku indawu, noko es safe. You are talking about ilantuka apu constitutions, okanye clause that deal with the safety, but you are not protecting your own people that are working for you. And ya zengoku sa, 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 sa zawngena njani, ku miklin benjalu, sidi sifunu nisapota ka nisapota njani. Whereas ni ngasapota abantu bino abanisabenza layo. Is security zikwa sprasa, ti tetangositne, ti tetango New Brighton. Sinawu endasenza yo payana asasebenzi, ngukulololiwa bakatangje pa. I think asandau zasindau, oku ngakama ticket. Patasandau simtaka abandaya kamapa, nemiko moyabo, we are not making sure that i atatu. It means ke uza waki disease, uhasukweko ilantuka kitambi kwa sandau. Uza utrongo la banda na abantu, uza ubaki crime, lietina sidi se ngapi sa sisi world committees. I'm speaking on behalf of Abandabatch, I'm speaking on behalf of eh sport, art and culture, timi glenda. Di kli take it up. Ti teleani si involve eh ku ye, ku ye plan eh, nina yo. So that, si si, ti takea ngagulenda by youth and sport and culture. Making sure that you visit eh eh communicate eh communities eh too. Nisi eh skills and tell us more about your duties and departments of yours in terms of duty. Nista zeleka banzi, nenda bayengoya show employment eh, si nisi sekuteklale, nenzele, ndogutangu outreach. Eh companies come to the community and explain very well it departments eh nisenza yo. Singa zololiwe ka, bakona nabana bapeka yo pa, bakona nonoka ata, esu nizi departmente zenzoya pa. Sekoni nganawa pasa, zinganawa getina, si zanzo funu be skumsha kakuru. Di kli take it up, okokebele. Ni tetange CEO Apa, get clauses tetange CEO and board members. Ni tinisneki pow, ba niweka gole. Sine power, okanye, sine power according to your clause, eh ni tetangazongoku. But kukindawu Apa that need revision, a be fig, a be fig. Na mbega nasabenza Apa laste, di kli napa. Forumsu zanai se contract, ba fika baba tadi pictures, kanga kanga. Ba kubaba pumba pama le report. Indo eteti dokuti, abai, i management eh zikoyo, azilandi, nifana neno sikoyo ngoku, ya bana mosikoyo, zao tetes nesitete, but i management isenzandoni ngalon, kunini nokutetu. Kunini nokutetu, kwenzo handoni nini. And ti teleani scuzzed ba nese ndoni, because kuwa sandau, azites lungiswe si afandalaisu. Sekona sandau, patagwenzi ndo ku ya fotoa kanga kanga, minuali mali yamba, smani sitalele Steven, ay, si 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 kopimali tila. Sensindwe tila, but how do we make sure that thing is happening? Kono umdo accountable for those, for those things, but I, si si fa, nishenga okubani sisho, sekona ngoku, nisa utati nos and after that, asias, savanas tembe.
Asikabezele.
Asikabezele ngokel, asikabezele. Eh we ni pikile ba ni tetaga three much, not too much. Okokebele la ndi, ti teleasi ne conduct. Si be ne relationship with you, we communities eh too, chengomdombe la Abandabatch. Nisi vakashale esbea benchilo bandi ino mba weye plan eh, nengosinabole.
Greetings, my name is Nosisi Matrose. Greetings chair in the committee on all the organizations here. I'm from Wat Twenty, I'm an ANC member. I support the bill. In clause forty-eight, they're talking about duties. I would speak more about the duties, but right now, I would like the Transnet to visit schools more often. Because the Transnet has projects eh right now in the colleges, but I would love them to go and educate eh in the schools. What about eh the thirty-six and above people who are unemployed? Even in clause fifteen, it deals with eh investigations, issues of prasa. There's ah prasa securities who are placed there, but where they are working eh 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 it is not good at all. Even the place where they'll be placed, it's damaged. So you don't take care of your own staff, so what more can you do to assist us? It is dirty there and it is not functional. Involve us in your year plan, as I'm representing eh the sports and culture. Visit our community and educate us. Please do outreaches. Eh there are many departments there that can assist people. Eh the last, lastly, the clause that you're talking about, CEO, board members saying you're giving them power. They come and visit and take pictures and then when they're done about that, they will write the report and that'll be it and nothing will be done about that. So lastly, we must have a relationship with you, where you come and visit us and teach us more. Thank you.
Man disbusela kumshala ngapambile. I Parliament de eh, siya eh ba selu nyena so. Oka bam, mvinu kuam, kumakande lo onke eh emini je. Manbulile lchu ba, luku zakuma. Eh ekamin, la lomzuzu ala Parliament de esondele banduin. Lo umi Apa, kuzolili kama ngwakwanda ndiosifani eh from Alex Matigina Cluster eh from Wat Fifty-Five, emadawe. Sa ukala zaga slalo, ti, ndikolelo anje oba, i departments kachulmende, kumakasha onke kaza sabenza, siyakaka mshelawana. Kungalili shua oba, egungati ngapakwetafele kutandi from government side i department eh represent we, siya siya ba songe i department eh one. Njongo kesa longo, sasoba, kai Parliament eh lile, yes banduin. Eh utatu mama, opu tusisi gamye from kuhlende wetu. Akola kole, okoku fanelu eh office yake. Eh, kanye, man telekala ndi, ndi chuku tin ndi amkele bill eh kuitande lo, le railway. Usialo kuza umdi kolela ku ba, senchilo ndati, ndikolelo ekutin i departments kachulmende wetu ziyakaka mshelawana. Ndele fakala yo ziyasabenza san. Ndikela ku zidublas benbi, nigae anda, le debate ngo railway. Eh ku ba, apiku kukelin, sinazu zin desu zikualasele yo, kunga kumbi, kui dulopose tu chigalele. Ndikela uketa, ngoku tetu ngota bam, under our railway together with ne, ne debate ndala eh ke anzi, enziwa. Ekufana emi kumila kunje, eh around agriculture and farmers. Ndebanu bage ndicho ku ba, senchilo ndati ndi amkele bill eh demvinu ku ba, sipume Apa zao implementwa. Eh kutomekeke kutin. Eh ku ba vote debate uku kuhlende wetu. Eh bezekle Parliament de, ba bez, bez ukuti. Isabenza kagutli bill, esasetengayo, okanye i challenge za za yo, kukunuku. Around eh 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 township eh too, under our railway. Sa ukapeloba, itu lopi onke, ihanwe, ngota ta, omama, opu di, osisi abane potensial ekufamishin, ba zismo farmers. Obasiya fumela ngoku le platform, the next challenge is a wa kukjonga i English zongena kwe, kwe, kwe trains eh too, esu dulopin, zivaluengama farmer. The critical challenge of that slalo, ne Parliament de ngokbanze. Kanga sifumani chu baluku nisuzuti. The bill that have been passed four couple years ago. Eh ya ite. Kukiklo eh fumela umi omsanza Africa, okulele wa pangele farmer for their whole life. Okuka, abena i percentage, I fumana eh from that particular farm. Ababantu snabo, apes dulopin, kaspakualasele, kabandaba pume farmer, benga funi. Ngobanga bandabati carry on by doing farming. I'm a member. God, I'm a member of the country. I'm a resource. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country. Someone is one by one, someone is graveyards. Still waiting for. In the process. You're not going to get. You're not going to get under this bill. It's insane. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the economy. It's a process. It's a platform. Your percentage. Your farmers. I'm a member of the farm.
Ask the best.
I'm a member. I'm a member. I'm a member of the challenge. I'm a member. I'm a member of the office. Your eastern Cape. It's a container that all the eastern Cape. The office is one. So in a level, the district offices. I'm a member of the no provincial offices. I'm a national. God, under the issues that you raised, I'm a member. It is a office. It's a moment. The second challenge on this. It challenges me. I'm a member of the council. I'm a member. Task claim from those farmers. I'm a groupie. I'm a member of the council. I'm a member of the man that goes. I'm a member. It's the name of the claim from the nearest office. I'm a member of the country. Around the townships. I'm a member. I'm a groupie. I'm a member of the English for the railway. I'm a member. It is a city. That's why I'm going to. I'm a member. I'm a member of the country. I'm a farmer around the townships. I'm a member.
Greetings, Chair and Parliament. And everyone. I am Zoli Lendantiso from Alex Matigina Cluster, Ward 55. I believe government has units that communicate. And I also welcome the bill. But we have observed current debates and old debates like those from agriculture. But the parliament must trace and track the progress regarding previous promises and its implementation. Let us look at the issue of farmers because many farmers. Many farms have obstructed the initiation of the bills. And secondly, people who worked in farmers were promised a portion. But they were. Those promises were not realized. The bill is introduced, but beneficiaries do not benefit until they depart. We have one office to monitor and run. The implementation or the realization of these bills in the eastern Cape. So when you train these farmers also, there must be an office that will work hand in hand with the farm workers and their families. Thank you.
Kai Kwas. Good morning, everybody. Warm cultural greetings to our parliament officials and also special greetings to our council and traditional people in our beloved community. I greet you. First of all. All protocols observed. Firstly, we support the bill. I'm Tita Ghea Gaup Cora Hemings from Ngamakua Karamatkais of the Eastern Cape. We are. I'm also a member of the executive member of the Davis Thierman Revolution Movement, which is responsible for the renaming of Port Elizabeth, Kabeka and the airport. I'm also a South African human rights monitor. I'm, yeah. Of course, and also a member of ANC for the next 10 years in good standing. I thank you. My leadership. We as a Koi people standing today as a very sad nation. All the good things we are talking about, opportunities coming our way. It will be for sure, we won't be involved because of the legislation that classify us as colored people. You must also take note, my leader. Colored people was only introduced to us in 1950 when the population registration act changed. That means most of our people are unemployed because of this fake identity we are entertaining at the moment. This identity make us foreigners in our own land. That's why you will see it's obviously we are nowhere to be found in any smears of government. Our plea today is not to. We needed trains back yesterday already. Because if we see, if we look at our infrastructure, our roads, conditions, the killings of our roads, we are failing our people. We are transporting wrong goods in our roads, which is causing a lot of damages, potholes and causing, I was involved in an accident a couple of weeks back because of our road conditions. I'm pleading to the parliament members to bring the opportunities, not only to the black indigenous people, but the black indigenous Koi community also. Because we are also black, but the legislation don't exclude us to be part of the African nation as a black society. And lastly. Yeah, I think that will be at the moment. Or I think my colleagues will take the next thing. I thank you, my leaders.
Greetings to the parliament. All protocols observed. I'm a member of the 1950. 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 I'm a member of the 1950.
I wanted to hear when she was saying the name that was introduced by my brother there.
Oh, the name is Chaukwap Cora Hemings.
Uh-uh, she didn't say. It's fine. All right, before the last speaker. Just take your seat a little bit, please, so that you are not tired. I will be taking another round of hands. But I want to remind us, if there are still people who want to speak, that the bill before us is the railway safety bill. Before you is the Portfolio Committee on Transport, responsible for passing this legislation. It's not Transnet. It's not Prasa. It's not people who can go out and employ anybody. But their primary focus is to pass legislation. And the reason they are here is to hear your inputs as it relates to this draft legislation so that it can be improved for the better.
I'm a member of the country. 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 I'm a member of the council. I'm a member of the council. I'm a member of the council. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of Transnet. I'm a member of Prasa. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country. So again, if you're not going to go to the country. I'm a member of 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 the country.
I'm saying we must go towards wrapping up. Because we've been here for a long time without preventing anybody from speaking. But let us remember that we've been here for some time. The weather is changing. The sun is setting. But you still have an opportunity to talk if you'd like to talk. So I want to take, if there is another round of hands before she comes forward. Let me see hands. You will be number one. You will be number two. You will be number three. You will be number four. You will be number five. You will be number six. You will be number seven. You will be number eight. Going, going. Number nine. Going, going, going. 10. I hope you'll be closing it, those hands. So please, let's be reminded, we are here about the rail safety bill and nothing else. Now, in this round, I will stop you. Let's be patient with one another, please. Let's be patient with one another. Masnyame Zelani. One of the big things that this democracy must teach us is to be patient with one another. You might not like what they are saying. You might not like the person. But please, let's listen to them. If, for whatever reason, you think that you are fine with being here, you are more than welcome to excuse yourself. We won't feel offended. If you feel like you have overstayed and you really want to go and do something else, we will understand. But let's not disturb other people, please. They were invited and they wanted to come and contribute.
I'm a member of the country. 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 I'm a member of the country.
Please go ahead, my sister.
Kai Kwas Molweni. Good morning. Good morning. A warm welcome to the Parliamentary Committee, Traditional Leaders and All Protocols Observed, to the friendly city Kabeka. My name is Danachwas Marden Rockman of the Uswana House. I'm also deputy chairperson of Contralesa's Provincial Women's Wing. I'm also a member of the Davis Thierman Revolution Movement, who played a part in the renaming process of the airport Karika and Kabeka. Leadership, I would like to draw your attention to clause 35. For the evaluation of training institutions and facilities. As I stand here in front of you, my leader, I'm a trained security five weeks with armed response. I never receive any armed training. I never receive any health training. So how can we employ security guards without the necessary skills to act in case of an accident or a gas leak or anything, a natural disaster occurs? I do appreciate. The Parliamentary Committee listening to our grievances. And I would like the Parliamentary Committee to make a recommendation that health training, basic health training should be part of any security training. I thank you.
Greetings, everyone. I welcome the traditional leaders and the members of the parliament. I am Danachwap Marden Rockman. And I am a deputy chair of Contralesa.
She spoke in English. I don't know which interpretation is that one. From English to English.
I'm sorry. I'm a member of the country. 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 I'm a member of the country.
Hello. My name is Toina Koisi. I'm the paramount chief of the Damascus-Kaykorana First Nations People. Well, my point is, I, I, I'm in a bit of a puzzle. Yeah, because I don't know if I must accept this bill or reject this bill. Because deep down inside me, I believe that the Koisan people won't benefit or will benefit the least from this program. Because of the Equity Bill. Please help us to get our people from the streets. If you can provide jobs for our people in this train line or this train bill that you must pass, please do it. But give our people jobs. Because my people is dying by the barrel of the gun. My people is living from drugs. My people is a jail full. We are the most marginalized people now in South Africa. We are the poorest of the poor. So my plea to you is, please help us. We will give you the nod to go ahead. But please think of the Koisan and raise Equity Bill with your partners in parliament. Please, please, my parliamentarians. Please, I beg you to do this. I thank you.
Greetings. My name is Paramount Chief Koisan Kabeka. From Namasagwa, First Koi People. And that's no good. I cast a guy and cast a long tattoo. I'm a member of the country. 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 I'm a member of the country.
Kai Tuhu. Kai Tuhu. I'm a member. I'm a member of the chief. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country. I'm a member of the country.
No, no, no. Please, can we, can we allow him to speak? Please, please, please. He's expressing himself in his own language, as we said. So let's give him a chance, please. I know we don't understand, but we will find a way of explaining what will happen.
I'm a member of the country.
Uh, ngabadu hebaha. Uh, I'm concerned about, um, our disability people using the railways, the trains. Um, I just want you to look into the safety of our disabled persons. If you, if, at the back of me is a gentleman in a wheelchair, how will he use in, uh, in a peak hour the train if there's nobody who can help him? There's no trucks or trains available? How can he use the trains? How can he be safe on the trains? People is rushing in peak hour time to their destinations or their homes or their workplace. And maybe this gentleman is, or somebody with a disability is going to visit the hospital and there's nobody to help him. Can you look into this matter, how weak they can use the trains? I, I thank you. Kai kan gans, uh, Kai, Iyo.
Di bulisa, wonge umtoko yo. Ndingu kumkani uparamount Kabeb. Ndine kala, ngabanta ba sebenzi sa, ololiwe. Inga kumbi abantu, abatinga inkonzo zabutala, okay, yeah, but disabled. Inga kumbi kuikeshi, eh, kuba, eh, kutageke ngalo, okay, during the peak hour. Umbozo wa muthi, banganwetu anjani, ukuba ba sebenzi se, ololiwe. Eh, ndikela iparamente uchoonge, lomba, ngokungulumene nababantu, and goes.
Ma, this is bullisale kumchali ngapambili. Yes, Abasaake, Abathali, Janibuli Sanongo, Kamaoka, Yesu Christ, Ngusitu, amen. Chali ngapambili, eh, ndiyayamke la lepe. Kai enfunu kuchongo, kuti, eh, we trains ma zmuyi. Because siabona pezintlin, kuko i, 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 i truck, eh, beside ndokwenzinkoza. And that's no ba eli this year, okay, yeah, last year. Genka yobunizbe traka ezintlin. And ngela keshi bezitrainz, bezikona, noko, umtwalo we trakazintlin, bengekomininzi. Okunyenfunu kteeta, ebekenda kuva, eh, reitweni. Kulendo ye trains ngoku, oma mama batenge sayo, abavumelekanga. Eh, inga kiampaya na koma mama banga vumelekango, okay, yeah, kubando abatenge sayo, es training. Indokba, abanu ana betu, abapangili. Ngoku kaku siti wa tinasi kula, ngela kesho mama betu ba betenge, es training. Umdu asuke echi nekwele traini azocho epai, ekwele traine tengi sa. Mnanditi ma bayekue oma mama bat, indo ekfuneke bayenzelewe. Kuku ba ba, no ba ba namatiki tokani banee coupons, es kaza yo kuti. Noti coupons man, indo zo mkaza, kuti, uyathengi sape training. Ilenduka i, gaske nabanda batenge sayo es training, ba jongwe. Ngoba ndatin di kuele itrain evela, ejo beke. Da fumanza apa itraini na kukoku selego because kutengswa ne drugs. Sa sfilisha indokbana asiku selegange training rather yo kwele pas. Goba ape training na kukuselega. Gaske ke ngoku kubekoe securities, ezozisichonge, abantu, abakuele yo ape training. Kunga ye kwa every porta tengise. Diyeva nalena yabanda ba shumaila es training. Likei apa, mnand, yo, ndinguta, I can't just ask. Dingutandi wetoi, to suga etinacha. Eh, kwa ward forty-four, di ward commit. Ebeklenda ba yabanda ba shumaila es training, of man sindokbana, nabantu yabazinro bongela, bakona bayakuela carriage, yabanda ba shumailayo. Itilondo kwa tinasi asiku selega, asitima ba ngashumaila. But u, u, i, i, indaba ya pa, funeke kuchongwe indokbana. Ababantu, ngabanda ba fanele kley, indoba ba ngabakona apes training. Di akela kakulu, bayekue oma mama otata, batenge sayo es training. Because aku pangelwa sonla, abanu ana betu. Gen, 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 ngoku kthengi sakwete training, and goes.
Greetings to the Chair and the Committee and the Community as well. My name is Tandwe Toi, from Newtunake, Ward forty-four. I'm a Ward Committee member. I support the bill. I really feel that trains must come back. Because, um, recently there was a track that was, that was involved in a car accident. Because of the capacity on the road, there are many trucks. But that led to an accident, but if there were trains, it would have been better. Um, I would also advise that we allow vendors to come back and sell, because I've heard in the radio that vendors will no longer be allowed to trade in the trains. I grew up seeing our mothers selling, and that's how they would feed their children. And they must monitor people selling in the trains, because when, uh, sometime I went to another carriage, I found out there were people selling drugs. So if there's security there, they'll be able to see when those people are selling drugs. Because there are criminals there. I, please, I just emphasize on that, you will allow the vendors to sell in the trains. Thank you.
Eh, ma ndibulele, ndibulishe, kumpati, teko. Eh, okwam, eh, nokteta. Ndingu luvu yo, Yangi. Ndichala kawat fifty-six. Ndii, ndi kward committee pa. But okona kwam, eh, nokteta kunye. Nanche ngokba apa kutetwa ngoku selego. Kukindai ekoyo apa, eh, yayilwayo kthala ngapambi. Eh, kuaktiwa SBF. SBF ke ngoku kuko es trainis yamba apa paga ti kwezintlu. Umsekelo, kau nyuka upega ngasamakman. Eh, payana ukuselego uyu ulbonene indokbana. Kualae SBF, funeke ebeyi party indokbana. Ma yo kata, es traini payana ukuse. Kunga fumaneki omonakali. But eh, yo nanndoyenze kayo, kana kufumanseki indokbana ngoku. Ma ifu ne inanzika, istipet. Kutwe ai, istipet izani, ne aplikeshi. Kai fawa lo aplikeshi, kutwe pa episho, ai ka saeno, esao saeno. So iskalo samseti. Ndina, ndiakela indokbana, nje mangoku, nila apa, ne paramente ilapa. Ma kubekoe ili so eli zaotili jonga ne, nalendo ye SBF. Kuba, na, na kwas nginda au es noti zingene, lololiwe. Namapoli sa, uyofiga, kobezwa lo SBF namapoli sa. So ndi, dike ngoke, indeni kela yo, okhulumene, ma kabelo jongu indokbana, le SBF. Ima, imae party eh, yes stipet, ukuse. Kubekona ukuselego ngakumbi, and goes.
Thank you very much, and I greet everyone. My name is Luvu yo Yangi, from Ward sixty-six. Mine is solitary. As we speak of safety and security, there is an issue of CPS. Eh, there are trains who travel between houses. And CPS is expected to guide such. But when stipend is, eh, issues of stipend are submitted, an application is required from Bisho. Therefore, I ask CPS, eh, issue to be looked at and particularly by the government. Thank you.
I greet us all this morning in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Good morning to everybody and, um, everything is observed, parliamentarians, there are subcommittees, there are people present, all organizations, et cetera. My name is Martin Green. I am a Ward Committee Member of Ward twenty-nine, and I represent public health. Now, health is something that is all over, um, taken care of, or should be rather, taken care of. Um, I'm in full support in principle of the current, uh, the Train Safety Act. Because I'm not worried about any obstacles afterwards. There's the issue of appeals, if ever one feels that there's something that could be changed, one can do that through the issue of appeal. I just want to make a plea to the parliamentarians and to the RSA government in particular. One thing that should be considered, for instance, is before passing a bill and before coming to consult with the people, you must first do that. Do your consultation process first. And when you then get things printed, et cetera, et cetera, then you know it's what the people want and it's what the people requested. So it's, it's, it's a matter of duplication, as far as I'm concerned, and the way I see it. Obviously, I'm very pleased to see you, that see, see you doing this process. Although I'm saying it should be vice versa. It should be vice versa the next time. And I will be pleased if you can commit yourselves today to say, okay, we've been here today, we will again be here in this part of the world within the next three months or six months, so that we can hold you to account. We can say, this is what we said, and this is what you promised, so how far did you get with it? So, um, Mr. Chair and delegation, I know it's not something easy, but I will have to do it. There is no other way that, that I can do it. I have one or two things I, I need to mention. I know the Chair spoke at length about the three minutes. But, um, the other thing is this process, this one day or half a day is not good enough. It isn't good enough for the difficulties we are facing at present. Um, let me just say, um, on these trains, I haven't, I didn't peruse your document yet. But in terms of the elderly, you know, people should be exempted, you know, in terms of charges. I also feel that, um, people shouldn't go and buy a ticket if they want to board a train. Those guards and inspectors must be put back on trains. It will help in more than one way. It will help with the issue of officers close when you want to buy a ticket. It will also help in terms of controlling on the train and safety measures. That is important to me. And I'm speaking not here for myself, I'm speaking on behalf of the people. And I do belong to quite a number of human rights organizations, I don't need to mention it here, but I'm just saying, by the way. Uh, Chair and delegation, connected to trains, we should have public transport, you know, the road. Because at the moment, things isn't going as it should. On many occasions, we are being held hostage, where we cannot go certain places, you cannot go to church, you cannot go and do shopping, you cannot go and draw your money when it's pension, et cetera, et cetera. So I will leave it to you and your capabilities to come up with something, um, you know, that you can pass forward to say, this is the answer on what was requested. But really, we cannot go on the ways going at present. If people don't get paid, there's no taxis, there's no buses. As if it's my problem, I don't own the taxi business or the bus business. Even the current taxi situation and stuff. We were never consulted with as communities that are using those taxis and stuff. The issue of consultation is not relevant to many people, and we are demanding it today.
That would be the last point, I hope.
Sorry?
I hope the next one will be your last point.
Who's speaking? Are you, is it the Chair that speaks?
Yes. It's the Chair, it's me speaking. I say, can that be the last point, please?
Chair, that is exactly when I started. I said, just half a day is not enough.
We, we will address, we will address it, I understand. I'm just asking that it be the last point, please, so that the other people can have an opportunity.
I will, I have two last points. Uh, Chair, please get the people in order. This is not parliament that they turned into a circus, that they don't want the President to speak. Tell them.
Uh, let us, let us respect them also, because they confined themselves to the three minutes.
I said two points I want to speak.
So we also need that everybody is given a chance, so go, go ahead.
Now they can have chances, I sat here the whole morning when people spoke. Chair?
Okay, Uom, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Can I, can I just start, please?
Go ahead.
Um, you should consider having parliamentary offices, you see? We, we don't want to go to political party offices, we need parliamentary offices, so that if there's issues, we can take it to the parliamentary office, which will obviously represent yourselves there. You people are too far away, we can't get to you. The last thing I want to say, and the parliament must please try and get the house in order. By that I mean, if I want to sit and watch TV, I buy TV, I pay TV license, I pay rates and everything. No, listen, people, you don't know what I want to say. What I want to say, Chair, is that, is a serious point. If I want to listen to the State of the Nation addressed by the President, I want to listen to it. We don't want obstacles and people that will talk about rights, that only suits them. We all have a right to listen to the President of the country. Thank you very much.
Danki Uom, danki Uom.
Greetings to the Parliament. I greet everyone in the name of Jesus. My name is Martin Green. Um, I'm a Ward Committee Member from Ward thirty-nine. Um, dia ukasa lombo. Dia, dia ukasa umtetoilwa endufuna, ukwa, ukwenza istilo kolontu. Kapam goba umteto pasiswe. Yani bantu kukala, ukuzeneve, ukuba abantu ba funa, Anton. Diya vya kuluku nibona nisenza lomsebenz. Kotoa gen ndingathanda nibu ye mchambi, enfagonyanga ezintatuensa basichalisa, nesitete, kuti, usuke la ngeli kesho uyofiga ngoku, ye kwenza kantona. Usuko olu alonelanga, ukuba singaveza ezimvozitu. Um, nanjogu bage, abantu ba thala. Tiziva ukuba, nababa, abeselebe tetile, ukuba, kanga ba wamba uyote ngaitiki iti, akusaku selega ngwambu yote ngaitiki iti. Kubekoe indlela ezinye ezinja zo kutenga, nanu wambu yofola pa ikeshi lite. Asikuaske kuya kunda wesnjenge kawe evenkile, ngoba ngamanyama kesho kuya fumanseki ba kopa si, akukotexi. Nakase sikholeke ipe yetu asikuaswa wamba gesyo ten gezozinto. Di akela gen alayoke ijongwe, ndikela ge iparamente, ilungi sintlela eh, ez, eh, enza ngayezinto, nanjogu ba ye kutakutani eh, stars bugele TV, ngusona. Kotoa gen, ndikela kuti ilungi sintlela eh, ambanga yo, and goes.
Kumchali ngapambili, yes Kebasaake. Abashli ba se Kebeka. Kele ngosika ma Malweni.
Ndingu Bulelu Asuka, ndingu mshali. Kuyaka peleka ke ukuba elikande lolo kuselo. Lu ya outsourced. So ndakhaulesa ndayoke chonga. Club Party Safety Permit Application. Ndabona okokba there's an application fee. And there's a payment, a annual, to maintain a permit. Kwango oko ndanendo eti umzonso ndu we are excluded apa. Ngoba ayiko le mali. Ngoku kukona sikhupegle yo singabandaba mnyamo. Wakona ndabona it duration of the permit, eighty-three to five years. Li ngindi kakulu elo klaysha. Akulu kakulu, I would propose ten to fifteen years. Ngoba kala mhlambi umtu uzayo iboleka le mali. Uzayo iboleka le mali. Kusafneke ene payments azenza yo on an annual basis. Kusakfneke aleye out capital yokuwenza lumsabens. Unemi nyimi tetwe chonge ndena ye efana ne ye labor, for example. Unabasebenz, zionakali zdozo sebenz. So by the time he expire a license, a permit. Agasena ndro nay. So anye indoge endibambe emtinobe tetewa ukuba inga telentitake te. Olunyushlanga olunemali. So ndya propose again. Okokba ukwa oloshlanga. Lu ya ifumanil license. Okanye ipi lena ma ibene ndawo, it clause eti. Kumakube ko ipi i partnership. Engosika kulu.
Greetings to Chair in Jesus' name. My name is Bulelu Asuka and I am a resident. I have noted the issue of safety and that it is outsourced. And I have checked that there is an application fee that comes with payment. And I have observed that black indigenous people are excluded. And largely, they are poor. Further to that, the duration of the license is short. And I propose ten to fifteen years. Because there are other costs involved such as the payment of workers or employees and other operational needs. I also propose that the bill includes BEE. Thank you.
Ma nditikanga nenzubasayo. Diabulisapa ngapambili. Ni yamke la lipili, pakame la lo. Ya yamke la lipili. And funiku yake pakui clause because lumsuzu umka kulu sufumanayo apa. Kautongeza clauses nintzi izindo esngati zifuna ukulungisu. Ndinombu uso ke apa. Kulendo yakarailway. Ingaba, jengoba zipzonke isporo zonakele. Isautatha itasilinga kanani lendo okanye iminyake mingapi. Ukwenza indoba singabinetema. Indoenge koyo ngoba okokrebela indoyo ba. Ap. Nyani siyakaneka tinandos no sixteen don kendi feke abantu. Dekalanga banduan na atibantu bakwindol. Ukankuti bangabana uyike yokta lumsabenza pakunu noniki three thousand. Because indolai one thousand eight hundred. Itexi zinyuka umhlane zolo. Itrainyo nangeba ibi right ka inaki kengo kiindoba. Kana ke kusiziwa akukonnditi sisa utatikaselinga le timeframe. Ukwenza lindoba siyasabasfumelanga one no two no three. So ndinalombu uso ke apa. Kotuwa yonipile sia yamkele. Okokrebela kendi tikuni ape lamente masini Buleli. Ukusapate la infula ebesi ngamili. Engulu kangak, okosmanesiwa etranskai. Siwe ekapa, siwe houtin apa kangi meko. Inga skenthaliminyonge susokwazufumanalinfula ngoba mansi. Ebesi pelile ape Nelson Mandela. Masite engos kune parliament. Ndingu Ombakazi ke ikama. Thithlalakwa Ward 41. Ndingu mamso kuini wa kwapi fili. Engos.
Greetings to the parliament, all protocol observed. My name is Ombakazi Befile from Ward 41. I support the bill. As I have limited time, won't dwell much in the clauses that were spoken about. As the railway line are damaged, I just want to know how long will it take for them to be fixed? As an elderly person having pension money, it is very expensive to use taxis. But I support the bill. Lastly, I just want to say thank you for coming to Gabeja because you have brought rain. It has been scarce for so long and now it's raining. I wish you can stay all day so that it can rain more. You have brought the blessings of rain to us, thank you.
Yes, Bulisalam shalanga ngapambili. Yes, krebasako. Diabulisana batlali boke basekrebeja ngakulinga nay. Di ngupo esimna wakamkaya from Ward 56 Madawel. I'm a ward committee member, ANC, in the good standing. Mshalanga ngapambili. Le lisistrelu ndesa stetanguku andikalu usteta ustela wipalament. I think it was 2011. Sise Colchester. Ki untlanganisukumila kunshi. I think ya inwalusi kika bawa ye kon. Apo kukoko abathali bi ndawo kauta etcha. Colchester indawo kwa kuse kenkel boss. Kukoko izinlu pa kukoko isporo skarailway kukoko abantu bakarailway. Batlalapa, I think za zinlu zeleven. Eza zinlu. Kutiwa lamshaba ngoka railway. Ababantu zange bawunuka umbani. Izinlu zabo gunosbona zipfimili. Aninsa abantu behtalapa ana he ninzinde kubegayo pa. Diambileke nabanya batlali bapanasiambe la lendo yapakoto ai. Abakwazukwenza umbani pa just because za zinzu skarailway. So ndya vuyaka wurailway ekona elapa. Ni kenai bake baya okchonga bake yo inspector banganza njani. Kusela mekwe yaba bandu bafumeleli. Bafumanio umbani. Just because kabafuti balapa apa. Engos, mshal.
I greet you all. My name is Boyson Kai from Ward 56 and I am a member of the ANC. What I will request is a repetition of what I once raised in 2011. And it relates to Colchester. When you pass Colchester, there are people who stay just there around the vicinity. And I think there are about eleven houses in there. Those people do not have electricity. And I am happy with the issue of railway system. And I plead with you to please attend and pay attention to those people and check them. Thank you.
Chairperson. Yes, krebasonge, sela paskahulmenti. Diabuliso kansi la. Abalapa ne ward committees songe nabantbongaba koyo. Diabulisengeka medite lumsabili, mfuli omyesu krismoluini. Ndilapa ikama. Wustembeli wakwengabani. Ndi shala apa MK Silvertown. Wasakeli. Kwa Ward 16. Ndi lilungu Africa National Congress. Ndi ku good standing for five years. Di mela apa di ward committee. Siyayamke la ke lepili. Kovuyo olkulu. Ifikile yo pamkuitu. Bakina ti sizo zithetela. Si bonisane kalimekrimbi. Okokala. Umna inzakuteta pa ngaku mapantala konetala fisheleka nyemnanerailway line. Iindwe yenzeka yopa ya. Ingalukusaleka kwa kubaznoba konan is securities. Chinchachinchani. Kubandi sishondre abantabanitsepa aba kuselikaanga. Si pila banti indawili pila banti ge povert la ndawili shalaguyu. Bantabanitsepa pangili. Umama no tata. Ba goglele isportile etulita, plastic bottles. Inzela inye ipeka pi yengomlele railway flat, railway line. Epeka etilpati. Kabefika paya be otengisa. Kabebuya bawuyani malimos. Kukabantabateli kula macholo. Abakutwage ngukwetata kuka mapara. Batata lamali. Bababeti kanti kabekuko is securities. Eziko yopa ya esingamki yoglandau. Banako ukusaleka abantu. Apa estishin, anyubregin estishin. Umwe no nenzondelelo ingaske. Landawipinde ivusele leke. Ide sistish so ukwela abantu. Di kwele pampna dipangela etowni for more than twenty years. Di kweli trenga apas seven. Di wengeka apas five. Paya. Si kendo mama kupinde kuvuseleleke esastish. Usuka kwa zastish yo peka eswar ko. Ingaske kufakwe ifensi pa kubiyewe pa. Ngabi konto ukwazi yo ukungumla. Upeka etilpati. Koba bayon zagala abantu. Anyindawega ndaidi teto ngobnyutata apa yangabantaba fuileyo. Mninsi umtu ofuileyo apa eloxin. Ufuyakwa abo bayenza landau. Ya labisporuin ichati. Nkomo kwa zese luswa. Zikhatelo la pa. Lendo ngikwambala zikilwe. Now and then zitrain. Zikfakwa pa zichike zixi. Kanti kabekus securities eti ay. Chikan nesngomo apa. Yengekolon baba kubiyewe pa glandau. Nbesifuneba kubiyewe paya glandau. Kukeshwe is securities. Galolongi klaysha. Si bonagali pa zipitize. Number two, ababantu. Ba ambapaya isporuin. Kababafana basituiti banga pangeliyo. Bayacha yamo sento zabot chayuani. Siyangani talambi sezanto. Ba ukano ka inyamo. Eza ngomo, vasina chikilbyotuna. Eza ngomo uva kwa zikilwe paya. Zikutiwa ngabo kwa tchekile kukitresi zayongelo klaysha. Isondio zavisporuin. Pamengapa nangapi kilu ngome zavago ngongo kusinsu. Kanti baba zikona is securities. Ngalolongi klaysha, ngingasukwenzeka langa. Nabantu bakwazi ukusaleka. Siyakela shalanga ngapambili. Ingaske zonge zindosekela yapa zibenako ukwenzeka. Galomasu, engos.
Greetings to the chair and the committee as well and the community. Diabulisaku slalo ne komiti. Na luluntu ngokpelele. Diakasa lomtetoyiloy. I support the bill. But my concern is that safety will be better if there are securities there. Because there are parents that are employed who do recycling. So they take their empty bottles and go and sell them. When they come back, they get robbed by the criminals there. But if there were securities, they will be safe. My desire for the station that it may be revived and they'll be fencing there. Because people just passed there. And there are so many people who have died even in those stations. And there are cows that graze there. That's why they get hit by the train. I really ask that you employ the securities. There are youngsters who go there and sit there and smoke whatever that they're smoking. And they will slaughter the cows that are there when they are high. Which that will not happen if there were securities there. Please, Chair, consider this, thank you.
Slalo. Ne krebasako. Basalbasitrebeka, diabulis. Ikama ulupolo. Iseni mutaimani. Di pumaka Ward 27, a champion kalela. Slalo. Okokala, diyamke la lepili. Nisanayo namshanj. Isizatu. Iclea in terms of your rules.